Unfolded up with some good comments. We met today, electrical inspector, code enforcement, myself, kick some ideas around. Then there were some additional emails that went out today between the three or four of us. And but it's all good stuff. It's all you're going to help us to get to where we want to be and what makes the most sense. And I appreciate Bob wants to, you know, keep, keep us moving forward and that's, that's great as well. At one point today, Dave Toomey and I kind of thought, geez, let's, let's throw this thing out and start over. And that's probably not the right approach. And so I know he can't be here right now, but he's going to tune in for the, for the, for your meeting. A couple of things come down to definitions, I guess. And so here we go with definitions. And let me, let me just say in front of all of you, what I think I said to Dawn was, in so many words, by all means, less can be more, the simpler, the better. And I have a very, I guess I'm not going to say a bad habit. I got a unique habit of being kind of wordy on things. So that's why this section has gone to, from G to K and beyond. So I apologize for that, but it's just, just trying to, you know, get the right explanation out there. So the topic today was kind of about dwellings. Okay, we've been calling this an accessory dwelling unit for forever. But if you go back into the original standard 230 dash 727, it was an accessory apartment. And so Jeff kind of identified some of this, we expanded upon it today. A dwelling is, and I put an email somewhere today, the definition from NFPA for my fire code. And it's pretty much identical to the definition in Marcel de Rosia, the inspector, I'm sorry, electrical inspectors, code, which is also NFPA code. So they're, they're very, very much the same. And you know, it talks about a place where you live that has everything, including, including a kitchen, sleeping, dining, living areas. The problem, which probably Jeff first identified is when you have a dwelling, it pretty much needs to be independent, which our, our new standard does say that we're trying to create an independent, affordable accessory dwelling. Well, that means by CMP's codes or rules and regulations, these have its own meter. If it's detached, it can't, it can't share the electrical system really in any way. It can't share the smoke alarm system like I wanted to do. So it just puts another, not, not a roadblock, but another hiccup in our, our thought process on how to make this work. So one thought is if we, and maybe we could do this with, with the table seven, one, Don, with some more edits by you in particularly. But we, we, Dave Toomey and I thinking that perhaps an accessory dwelling unit is a detached living space. Okay. And in that case, we can say it is a, I think it's reasonable to say that has to be sprinkled if we want it to be. It would have its own service, it would have its own smoke alarms. It wouldn't really impact the existing home. If the existing home has built within it, within its existing walls or added to it on the appropriate foundation that Donna, Donna and I have talked about, then perhaps it's a accessory apartment, not a dwelling, can share the electrical, can, can share smoke alarms and things like that. And I guess I say that for a couple of reasons because if, if not, the affordability part goes away. Now age friendly hates me even more when I say we ought to have sprinklers. So that's my opening thought.
Okay, thank you. Um, so board members and Bob, if you have anything else to add, jump in. But you know, I think we have to maybe start at like the highest 5,000 foot level of this and, and just decide that we still want to go down the road of accepting or making, you know, some sort of option for affordable units of some kind detached or attached to, you know, get to the point of giving people more places to live within the city. So if we're still on the path forward of like, yes, we'd like to move in a direction of creating definitions that will allow for this. Then I think we obviously have some more work to do. Jeff, do you want to jump in?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. You know, I think it's, it's vitally important that we've, we've seen the complications that can arise when we try to venture out on our own and try to make something fit. You know, we're trying to reach a goal that the majority of the board felt was important. And we're trying to create wording that allows it to fit. And the biggest challenge that's coming in, as Deputy Chief Pendleton pointed out, is that, you know, we're dealing currently with two NFPA codes that run very parallel because they're governed by the same body. They, they try very hard to keep their terminology standard. But then we've got, you know, the building department using their international building codes that don't necessarily, they're not governed by NFPA. So they start to run different determinations and it starts to run things afoul. And then we throw in central main power in there. So I guess for me, where you guys had the majority of the, the majority of the ZORs committee felt like this is a reasonable offer. You know, as much as I believe in trying to keep things affordable and choice, maybe you guys should go for the whole nut. You ought to just say everything in the city of Saco that is going to be residential construction must meet the code. And Deputy Chief Pendleton said that the code is already in place and the state of Maine doesn't adopt it. Well, if we, if you guys use that as your platform and you pick up what is already drafted, a lot of those conflicts then start to go away because Deputy Chief Pendleton's code that they want to adopt is an NFPA code, which is going to match up more in alignment with the national electrical code. We're not going to have a lot of these issues. We're not going to try to get that early notification. That's an extra idea, you know, there are lots of ideas that we're trying to add in to make it work because of the complications that are being thrown into this. So part of me says, rather than trying to invent the wheel and, you know, it takes a lot of very intelligent people in their respective fields to find these little clauses. And I'm sure that there's more if we would continue to analyze this. I would just say, you know, if you have that momentum and that majority that thinks this is a good idea for Saco, just go for the whole nut, take the whole thing and run with it. Just say all new residential units. I would think that that might be the easiest way to not get so sidetracked. And it's just a lot of deep material to try to navigate through in, in this, in this manner of trying to make a smaller piece fit. And you know, like I said, I obviously wouldn't support it because I believe it's more important for the people to have the choice and to try to keep it affordable. And my idea of having the city offer some incentives saying, hey, if you put these residential sprinkler systems in, we're going to waive your fire service impact fee and maybe we'll give you a tax break. You know, whatever percentage the fire department's budget is out of the general budget, maybe they get a 2% tax break on their tax bill for the first five years, some incentivize it somehow to try to get them to do it. But regardless, the majority felt like this residential springs were a good idea. I would suggest just go for the whole nut as it was drafted by NFPA, the existing code. And I think that a lot of these conflicts will go away. And I welcome Deputy Pendleton's thought process on that.
I agree with you, Jeff. At one point, the majority did say, why are we, why are we messing around? Let's just go for everything. And so I was pleased to hear that because that's my goal. But in discussions with the fire chief, we were, we were certainly afraid that if you ask for everything, you might, you know, end up with nothing at all. But at, at this point, we've had good success with the subdivision part of it. So, so that's, that's great news. But I still hesitate to say, let's, let's do it right now. You know, I, I'd certainly run it by the chief. We don't want, we certainly don't want to throw up any, any roadblocks so that then people come back and then after debates, we, we lose the subdivisions, you know? So it's, it's, it's a catch 22, but I follow Jeff's logic very, very much. And in that instance, Jeff, if someone created an accessory space in their home and it's not considered a dwelling, then they wouldn't have to, you know, sprinkle their existing home to get their, their, their parents or their in-laws, you know, into a, into a building. So, so yeah, there's, there's a lot to consider for sure.
Bob, did you have something to add?
Yeah, thanks, Alyssa. I, I think I was on the scene when the council originally said, yes, there's, there should be ADUs in Saco. And as I recall, it was councillor Eric Cody who championed these things, at least he was an early supporter of them and recognized that. And I think he was coming from an affordable housing point of view. You know, let, let somebody turn the, the spare bedroom or the garage or, or the, the shed or whatever it may be into a, and call it an auxiliary unit, whether it's for mom or dad or to be rented as a revenue enhancement. It's a good thing with relatively little impact on, on the neighborhood. And at that point, they were, it was really, to the best of my recollection, it truly was at the 5,000 foot level, just a broad brush. Let's make this possible for, for residents across the city. And, and they didn't really tackle the, the tougher stuff. They, they didn't really get into the details on that it seems like on, on a variety of issues. Boy, when you, the devil's in the details, right folks? When you start getting into the details, it just becomes so much more complicated. So, so I guess I'm advancing the notion of might it be the planning boards' task or possibly goal to, to keep it fairly broad? Yes, there may be ADUs. And then on a case by case basis, allow the, the code office and the electrical inspector and the life safety people, such as our fire, fire department personnel to figure out again, case by case, whether somebody at 136 Main Street, they want an ADU. Well, given their situation, are they going to be able to on an electrical basis and on a, on a sprinkler basis to pull this off? Here's what's possible. So just a thought that when, when it comes to the language we're looking at adopting, do we intentionally keep that on a broader basis? But include references that shall be, shall be subject to code enforcement issues such as electrical and sprinklering, et cetera. And, and let it be figured out by the, by the people that we pay, pay to figure those things out.
Don, I'll just flip to you, but Jeff, I see your hand up. But if you have anything to add before Jeff speaks again.
Only basically, you know, I, I would like to see the planning board as we move forward with this, probably in a general consensus, agree that the, the idea of having accessory dwelling units is still a good idea. It was endorsed before. And I think it's, might be important for planning board to move forward as we try to struggle through these issues with the general proposition in agreement that accessory dwelling units is still a good thing. Still play a viable, you know, role, if you will, in the total housing picture in Saco. I would still like to see a reasonably, a reasonable income couple have the opportunity to put mom or dad in a portion of the house that they're in with addition or whatever. So that they, she can live with them, but yet have her own independent living quarters. I would like to see, I would like to continue to see the ability for, let's say, an elderly widow, a lady who's in a house, have the ability to have an apartment that she can rent and have some income that would sustain her ability, you know, to remain in that home, you know, as the years go by. These are all things we talked about before, and I think are all the shining stars, if you will, of having accessory dwelling units, you know, as a provision in the ordinance. Obviously, as Dave and Jeff and, and, and everyone else has illustrated, there are several issues, you know, associated with whether or not they should be sprinkled, whether or not, you know, or what the electrical requirements are, you know, to, you know, to make them happen. I don't, I guess basically what we need to do as a planning board, if I will, if I can suggest is we need to go forward indicating to both staff and the council that the planning board is still very much in support of with the council. You know, the creation of and the use of accessory dwelling units, how we regulate those in the future, you know, will evolve. And, and what people ultimately have to do code wise to comply to make an accessory dwelling unit happen will be what it is. Right now, the ordinance that's effective, April 11th, has a provision for accessory dwelling units. All right, Dave Toomey, Don Fisk, the rest of the crowd in code enforcement are ultimately, you know, going to be hit with applications for an accessory dwelling unit. And I would think without the ordinance getting into a lot of specifics, I think what we need to do is we need to wet whatever the code requirements are evolved. While you're separate of what, you know, in other words, I guess what I'm saying is I would not be inclined at this point as a planning board member to say, oh, to the city council, we ought to cancel accessory dwelling units because it's just too propic. You know, that doesn't seem ultimately to be the direction we already headed in. And I'm not going to say an awful lot more about this, but that's generally where I'm headed. And thank you for the time.
Thank you, Don. I'll just say briefly, I'm in agreement with everything that you just expressed. Matt, thanks for joining us. Wave me down if you want to jump in. We're still talking about ADUs and sprinklers. Jeff, you had your hand up if you want to go again.
Yes, Madam Chair, I agree 100% wholeheartedly with Don that yes, ADUs should definitely stay in the ordinance. I think it's an incredible compliment to the comprehensive plan. There are so many avenues about our increased density and keeping loved ones close and assisted living. And, you know, being able to age in place, there are lots of benefits to that. And I just respectfully think that we, you know, there is nothing wrong. I think all the codes that are in play for plumbing, electrical, as they are now, would allow ADUs without much complication. We all have the tools to make it through. The difficult time that's coming up and we cannot have the code office arbitrarily trying to figure out what it is. As Deputy Pendleton pointed out, is that once we require the sprinkler system, that sprinkler system then must be approved by the state fire marshal's office. And the state fire marshal's office is saying that they have a very strict code that is not adopted in the state of Maine. But once we say that we are doing residentially, that's the code that they reference. And that's where all of these conflicts start to come from is when we're trying to, you know, force the residential sprinkler system in the ADU. With the exception of wherever K came from, that having smoke alarms attenuate in both units. That was something else that just came out of, was just a suggestion from the code office or, or what. But that's where all of the electrical complications came from is how the state fire marshal is then going to determine what type of building it is, if it's one building. And by their definition is what screws up everything electrically, including devices. We can't have devices like line voltage smoke detectors going from one unit to another. It's not permitted. And an only way to make them go off is that unless we use like a wireless device or a low voltage alarm system from an alarm vendor. And that's where the complication comes from. And I guess my point was, is, you know, we all agree ADU should remain in the code. They're incredibly important to our community as we age. The majority of the ZORs and planning board feel like the residential sprinkler system should be included in the code. And I guess that would be my suggestion is include it as a whole. So we're not trying to add our own verbiage about interconnected smoke detectors. If they just go ahead and sprinkle the whole building, it's considered one building. A lot of these issues as far as, you know, electrical code, CMP, all go away. You, you get the benefit of your sprinklers that you're looking for. And a lot of these complicated issues, in my view, will start to go away. We just have a real hard time when the state fire marshal is going to make a declaration that they are two separate structures. That makes it much more complicated. Or if they're two independent structures that would become joined by a patio to make it one structure, then we can't have two services on different points. They have to be at one point on the building. So that means meters grouped together. That's where the complications come from is from the state fire marshal's determination of how many structures there are. And that's why my original suggestion is if you guys feel that strongly, we know we want ADUs, just go for the sprinklers as a whole, I think would probably be your best bet. Thank you.
David, yeah.
Thanks, Alyssa. I guess a historical question that maybe Bob or, or Don can answer, being kind of the senior men, at least in tenure with everything. Can, can anyone tell me that? Or tell me when we, we kind of migrated from chapter 230 zoning, that section 232, 727 I mentioned, to the, to the new language. How did, how did we lose accessory apartment and gain MDU? Does anyone know how we, we changed that, those terms?
You mean apartment to ADU?
From apartment, accessory apartment to accessory dwelling unit.
Don, you want to go ahead?
The only thing I can tell you, David, is to my estimation, you know, what we had, accessory apartment definition we had in the prior ordinance and the ADU definition we have now are significantly different. I think what we were doing is we were basically, and Bob, you, you know better than anyone about this, I think, in your capacity. I think what we were doing is simply adopting what is standard language. You know, that's, that seems to be consistently used throughout zoning regulations everywhere. For instance, I'll give you, for instance, I was dealing recently with the town of Orchard on an accessory dwelling unit. And they're all defined the same way. It seems to be, if you will, a standard definition that's adopted throughout the US, if you will, as to what. We had previously the term accessory apartment. And Jeff, Bob, I'm going to, I'm, you know, I'm going to, you know, divert to you on this. It just seemed like all we did was just simply adopt the same language as being used everywhere else in the country instead of accessory apartment.
And that's absolutely fine answer, Don, you know, thanks very much. You know, to be repetitive again, we went from apartment to dwellings where we kind of run into an issue. Maybe no one else has identified it yet, but, but we have. And the other, the second-
Excuse me, Dave, for interrupting. The problem we have, I think, it's, we define an accessory dwelling unit in the ordinance and then we say it's not a dwelling. You know, yeah, which is kind of conflicting in itself, in and of itself. But that's, you know, being here or there, that's what the language indicates. It's kind of funny, isn't it?
My other question, maybe you can comment on, is the, the old zoning said the accessory apartment had to be either within the existing home or, or in addition to an existing home. When did we get to unattached?
I think as, I think as we progressed through this, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure it was ZORT that did this. But it was obviously discussed and suggested several times that people would be looking to establish these in a detached structure. You know, several people have a freestanding garage or they have what could be considered, well, you know, in some instances, it could be a barn, you know, that's attached to a property. And so maybe as a result, Bob, if you remember too, maybe as far back as discussions with Kevin Sutherland, when we were talking about, you know, where the city was going and infill development and all that. I think the general idea was, well, we need to expand, you know, to people being able to do this in detached structures that they already have on the property, you know? And I think basically that's where that came from, David. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Don, that's, you're right. That's, we started talking about it during the zoning ordinance and those, those items came up as, you know, requests from residents, you know, expanding their property, backfill lots, infill lots. So, so we're seeing more requests for the detached, you know, ADU. So that's, that's during the zoning ordinance revision, that's, that's where this came from. Or, or kind of a, you know, at its, at its current proposal.
Well, I, I think maybe, I think, go ahead, Bob.
I can only point out that, that, that's, that what every one of you can do simply by flipping open your, your existing zoning ordinance, that accessory apartment in a single family dwelling goes back to 2001 and then it was updated in 2008. And then, and that's simply the definition. And then if we flip forward to the performance standards, it's, it's entitled standards for an accessory apartment in a single family dwelling. Looking down through that quick, so I, I think the, I dare say the ADU is in a term that evolved probably nationally over time. So with this latest iteration, we're all of a sudden referring to it as an ADU rather than a, an accessory apartment. But, but what the difference is between the two, probably not much. And, and the detached part, yeah, I, I can't do any better than agree with you, Don. That, that, that may have come up, you know, during the Sutherland era in recognition that, hey, why, why must these be within the original four walls? You know, why can't it be a garage or why can't it be a, why, why can't you even put up an existing new structure in the backyard? If your lot supports it. And nobody came up with a good reason why we shouldn't.
If I may, one, just make one more comment very briefly. My understanding at the time, when Kevin was still here and he was talking originally before ZORs even got much underway, the idea was we need to provide as many opportunities as we can for infill development, you know, within the city. You know, and, and that was just one more way of doing it.
Okay, so Bob, given our discussion so far this evening, where do you think we are headed from here with either more discussion about this, more action on this?
Alyssa, I wanted to just make, plus we have to remember back in the day, they used to be called in-law apartments before even ADUs came out. Used to always in-law. One of the problem, I mean, I know, and I agree with Jeff in the fact that of saying, just throw everything in, let's, you know, put the max in, get them. And yes, we all agree ADUs are an amazing, they need to be an option for people. But the problem right now that we're running into is construction- but the problem right now that we're running into is construction costs are almost at two hundred dollars a square foot right now. And so even for a small three hundred square foot, if you're gonna go really limited size, you're looking at sixty thousand to start. And if we're tacking on, especially for an attached with an existing property, I'm not talking a detached. Detached is if they're standing on their own, the potential of them having their own requirement, yes. But if it's attached and then we're saying to somebody, they've got to spend an extra, you know, five to ten thousand for the existing home. I mean, what, that's a, I mean, that can be a big chunk for people. And, um, possibly a deterrent and it could make or break somebody being able to do it and keeping their family with them or bringing the parents in. Um, and again, and I'm only saying that because of the times that we're in right now and the increase of the construction cost, and we don't know when that's gonna end. It could just potentially continue to go up over the next two, three, four years. Um, but my last quote that I've heard is almost is two hundred dollars a square foot. And if anybody, you know.
I don't, I think, yeah, Jody, that we have to remember though is there's like no inventory to be seen right now in real estate and especially also there's nothing really available under two hundred and fifty thousand, so.
Right. And it used to be easy for people to say, okay, well, we'll sell our existing and we can buy something bigger. Or something that had, but again, now with the cost of that, they're either not available or you're doubling your mortgage prices because you're gonna find something for, you know, less than four hundred thousand would be, um, lucky if you, you know, for a four or five bedroom or something that already hadn't attached.
Right. The reality is with the housing crisis we're in, that isn't going away this year or next year. We're gonna see a lot of people trying to get creative with their existing properties.
Mm-hmm.
Whether it's to house family that they need to have with them or to have a new income stream on their property. And so I think there's gonna be a higher and higher demand for these because there is just no inventory for anyone right now and people can't even find.
Right. So. And I think we're seeing more detached because people do realize that after their, if, if it is for, in fact, let's say to bring an aging family member in, they have that attached unit. Well, what do they do with it? They don't necessarily want renters being attached to their existing. So, hey, if we can detach it, you get a separate unit and then they have the rental property down the road. Um, so I think that's probably the increase of the detached coming up more and more.
Yeah. Uh, Don and David, I see both your hands up. I don't know who went first.
Jody, ju- just for perspective, um, I built a house in two thousand and eighteen at two twenty-five a square foot.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I bid one yesterday at two seventy-five a square foot.
Wow.
Basically the same kind of house. And this is not anything elaborate. This is your basic home.
Yep.
And, and I, Alyssa can tell you, um, I know listings are often, you know, listings often show the price per square foot, because and I think it often includes property and house. Alyssa, I don't think there's a separation, but uh, you can speak to the numbers that you're seeing, you know, relative to what's on the market today is per square foot. But, but I, I'm telling you right now, new construction is heading north of two seventy-five a square foot.
Yep.
And the cost to build is being offset right now by the low interest rates, but the big problem is really inventory. There's an, an absolute inventory crisis, and I think it's gonna push people in this direction more to maximize what they have for existing property that they can get creative.
Well, I, I was actually just told by a longtime Realtor friend that people that are now trying to purchase second homes are being discouraged and the rates have doubled because they're trying to discourage second homeownership.
Hmm.
Property.
Yeah, interesting.
Because they're, they're anticipating the foreclosure is coming through down the road, whatever. And so there again, too, if somebody's, okay, well, you know, buy a second small lot property, they're gonna be doubling, if not tripling at some point, their interest rates. So it, you know, trying to keep this manageable and reasonable for the residents with the options. I mean, it, I don't know which way we go. And also, you know, yeah, we do want to keep people safe. And again, we all are supporters of that. And that is one reason why we did send this back because we knew we wanted it in there. But as deputy chief Pendleton, when we were getting the missing, you know, not knowing that the city was gonna be aligning with the potential state fire marshals, just making sure that, and we have now realized there's so much more involved in it.
Yeah. David, I saw your hand up a couple of minutes ago and then Bob, I just saw yours.
Yeah, real quick to, to recap what we were, we started with a requirement for sprinklers in new attached ADUs. And then when we learned that the existing home had to be sprinkled as well, we, we quickly edited out of there because like you, I don't want the existing homeowner to have to, you know, modify their home to install a sprinkler system. Granted, it takes protection away from, from the, uh, accessory dwelling, but, uh, but, you know, it, it's more important that they don't have to modify their home. So if we take Dave Toomey's advice and somehow change an, an attached u- unit to something other than a dwelling, you know, that can happen. You, you can, um, you know, take that spare room, you can add in addition to an existing home and not have to sprinkle either one. If you build or convert something that's totally separated out in the yard somewheres. Um, to be honest with you, I don't have a lot of sympathy for the, for the cost because yeah, there's gonna be upfront costs and, uh, I gotta think that, you know, your mom or dad that's gonna move in there, let's say, are, are selling their home. So there should be some money to, to, to kick in, if you will. But down the road, it's gonna be a rental income and that rental income will eventually pay for the sprinkler system. So just, just a couple, you know, avenues for me, the, the way I look at it.
Thank you, David. Bob, did you want to add something?
Only that, uh, okay, we've taken the board's temperature and the board is saying stick with it. Uh, so good. That, uh, that means it comes back to staff. Uh, we will hammer out, uh, based on the input we've gotten tonight and, uh, with, uh, uh, planning, fire, uh, code enforcement at the table, uh, what, uh, what, what is best for us to move forward? I, I'm starting to see, you know, the type of charts I'm talking about, and I'm not coming up with the name, but, uh, if, if yes, then go down, then the arrow points there. And uh, if no, then the arrow points there. Uh, maybe we have to work up some kind of chart to that effect. Um, but I, I think we can unravel this so it can be understandable and so that whatever codes need to be met are met.
Thank you, Don. One last comment?
One last comment, very quickly. I would hope that what we're talking about is the issue that brought to workshop tonight is are sprinklers gonna be in ADUs? As we've weighed up. Is the board going forward with the consensus that ADUs should be sprinkled as suggested, whether attached or detached, as, you know, Dave has weighed it out. You know, in, in the ordinance. Uh, I would hope the board would go forward with general consensus as to whether or not it should be sprinkled. If the consensus says they should, then let the code requirements work themselves out. But are we ultimately bringing forward in the future to the, to the county, the city council an amendment to the ordinance that says ADU is a sprinkler? And I guess that's what we need to decide.
And Don, where, can you summarize where you stand on that? Are you in favor of that?
I am. I'm in favor of ADUs being, being sprinkled as Dave has indicated. I think he's made, I think he, he's fashioned a reasonable compromise between attached and detached. And I think it's going to work. I'm in support of what he's proposed. Whether we do it in the paragraphs that he's, you know, that he's suggested, or we do it in, in my suggested changes table, doesn't matter. It ultimately results in the same thing. And so, yes, I am supportive of that.
Okay, I am as well. Matt, I'll go to you and then Jeff.
Yeah, you know me, I'm in support of the ADUs. I, I appreciate Jody's thoughts. Um, I, I'm a little bit on the same page as Dave. Um, I think the, the overall cost of construction is going up. The sprinkler is, um, for me, it's a, it's a, it's a safety thing. It's a, it's a big life safety thing. Um, I don't, I can't imagine anyone, um, it, God forbid something happens. I don't think anyone's gonna be upset that sprinkler system, you know, saves someone's life. So, um, I'm in support any way we can get it in there.
Thank you. Jeff, any last comments on this?
Um, just kind of staying with my initial thought, um, I, I would not be in support of having it in the ordinance just because of, of the costs and the complications. Um, unless they're able to, you know, to me, we're, we're just getting too, it's getting too muddy trying to do the ADU. I would just say if you guys are in support, go for the whole, the whole thing. And just go across the board for every residential unit. Um, I just see it getting too convoluted, trying to do this piecemeal and trying to draft our own um, way of getting it just for the ADUs. I mean, they're all valid points. But I would rather see the city educate and incentivize, um, to encourage people to do it than to mandate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Bob, anything else on this item or in general with the workshop as we near six thirty?
Thank you. I've, I've gotten what I need and I think perhaps deputy Pendleton has too. Uh, as far as the ADU and sprinkler issues go. Uh, yep, the only other thing, um, just briefly, uh, gonna touch on uh, that second item and, and believe me, when we, when we added, uh, uh, master plan development as a second item for workshop, but we certainly did not believe that we were gonna, you know, get a full workshop discussion out of that item. Um, just wanted to get it on there from, from this perspective. And that being that, um, I don't know, perhaps one of the worst kept secrets in, in these circles, uh, has been that, um, Mike Ian has never lost sight of, uh, um, the, the notion that the, the current language in the new zoning ordinance related to master plan development is, is just insufficient. Uh, it, it goes back to perhaps the middle of last year. And, uh, that staff trotted that forward kind of as just a starting point, a, a very bare bones approach to master plan development, almost as a, um, a, a challenge to the ZORs committee and the planning board saying, okay, here's a, a bare minimum starting point. Where do we go from here? What, what additional ornaments do we hang on the tree, so to speak? Uh, to flesh out what is, what eventually will be a final product for master plan development. Well, um, those ornaments never got hung on the tree and that, that language stuck around in the new zoning ordinance and, and eventually it's what got adopted. No ornaments. So Mike recognizing that, uh, has, uh, has, um, said, uh, we gotta do something about that. Um, if this ordinance is moving forward as, as drafted, um, you know, much of the ordinance may be perfectly fine, but, but we know that master plan development is not fine. And if by chance, um, master plan development gets uh, adopted by the city council and it's, uh, available for use throughout the entire planning or excuse me, Portland Road District, uh, then for God's sakes, we gotta do something about that language. Um, so at this point, board members, uh, and if you've been paying attention, you've got a pretty good handle on it. Uh, the city council will be taking that up for the final time. It's the second and final reading, uh, a week from, uh, yesterday. So it'll be up on the twenty-second. Um, there are, at, at the city administrators, uh, urging the item commentary that's been prepared for the council, uh, lays out three options. Um, the council may choose to, uh, say, we don't want any master plan development in the Portland Road Zone period. Um, the council may choose to adopt, uh, master plan development for the entire Portland Road District. Uh, and then third option, um, is that, uh, uh, we go ahead, uh, and do not uh, adopt master plan development in the Portland Road Zone, but recognize that, uh, it's desirable for at least, uh, it's at least some, if not all, of the entire Portland Road District. Uh, but recognize that the existing language fall short. Uh, that the matter be handed back to the planning board and within a defined point of time. And that might be six months, it might be ninety days, whatever the council decides it would like to do. Um, within that period of time, the planning board be charged with, uh, uh, working on that language and, uh, providing a, uh, something that is acceptable um, for long-term adoption of, uh, master plan development in the Portland Road Cor. Um, so I guess I would say I, I'm hopeful that the, the council will say, uh, we recognize what we've got now isn't, uh, isn't a good long-term solution. Let's hand it back to the planning board, uh, allow them to resolve this within the next three to six months and, uh, and tackle it once we're handed back a workable product. Um, so the, uh, what we were potentially gonna look at this evening, uh, would be what I, in my mind, I'm thinking of the, the Mike Ian product. Uh, Mike and I have hammered away at this for the past six weeks or more. Um, uh, quite honestly, it just, uh, utilizes a lot of language from the uh, existing section on master plan development. Uh, you're not gonna see a lot of new stuff in there, although there is a little bit of new, uh, two or three points have been added that I think make for a better product. Um, so this was just to bring the planning board's attention to, uh, a direction we're potentially going in. Um, can we improve the language, uh, that addresses master plan development without question? Uh, we've got an improved product already. It's not necessarily going in front of the council next Monday night. Uh, but if the council would like to see it go in that direction, then, uh, we've got a good point to start from. So, thanks for my, allowing my worgeness here, but it's kind of where we're at. Um, and if we, uh, it's about all I feel the need to, uh, share with the board tonight. No great expectations to do, do much with it. I don't think we've got the timeframe for it this evening, but, um, that's where we're at.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Jeff, I saw your hand up first and then Don, I see yours. Do you have questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'm just, um, I'm just a little bit confused. We, you know, we're looking at a draft amendments um, that were dated February eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-one. And like, for instance, I'm on page twenty-one of our packet. We've changed section I to section J and it is including master plan developments in the Route Five mixed use, the R five MU district. And you know, it's like the, the planning board has been through this and it feels like here again, there was unanimous recommendation to convert that back to an MDR to be consistent with the rest of the, the zoning. But we're sliding another draft to council that's saying it's, it's still in existence. And, and granted, I know it's still in existence because the council hasn't acted on it. But if we slide a document like this back to them, it's almost like we're saying, yeah, we said it should go back to MDR, but we also want to keep the language in there. And um, a, at this point, I feel like we need to kind of take a minute, put the brakes on, breathe. We have a very clear recommendation on that R five MU. We have a very clear understanding now of the process of master plan development and how many holes there are in this, this boat that we're trying to use as a tool. And I, I don't think it's ready to go to the council. I would almost recommend that we send up another recommendation, the council temporarily suspends or puts a moratorium on master plan developments and that they recommend reconvening the ZORs group. So we bring people like Mr. Eon back to the table and we work on those extremely difficult details of densities that he has brought up, the details that we've learned trying this machine of the, you know, cranking through the whole cycle of a machine for master plan development. We learned there's some very difficult things for both the city and applicants in the way it's worded. And I, and I, I think it's nice to have kind of an idea, a concept plan as drafted for February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. But, you know, there are several people on the board here and we all have our views and I think it'd be more important to set some true time aside and truly try to refine this so that it could be an asset to the city versus, uh, a vulnerability. Um, so I would re- request that we try to send up something that says we're, we're ready to, you know, really put the brakes on and reevaluate this as a whole with more members. Like I said, possibly the ZORs committee again, re- reconvening. Like I said, possibly the ZORs committee again, re- reconvening. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Jeff. Don, I'll let you go ahead and then maybe we can.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna be very quick because we've run out of workshop time. Basically, what's coming before the council on the twenty-second is whether or not they should adopt the amendment to allow MPDs i- in the Portland Road District, period. Okay? That's what's before the council on the twenty-second. I've spoken to that, as you know, in the basic white paper that I wrote and sent to the council about a week, week and a half ago. And, and copied you folks on it too. Uh, I'll be speaking to them in the public, uh, comment portion of the meeting on the twenty-second, recommending that they don't adopt the amendment as it's being presented, because basically what it does is it allows MPDs throughout the, uh, district with the existing language in the ordinance. And, and to Bob's credit and to Mike Eon's credit, they've gone a long way in refining the language for MPDs in the ordinance. It's not an issue for the, for the council to be considering on the twenty-second. And so what I'll be saying to them basically is, as, a- and Jeff, this was part of our recommendation to the council when we originally, you know, talked about this on your motion. The final report to the council went with, we don't recommend you adopt the amendment. What we do is we recommend that, that we go back to work on this and develop something that's better. And, and you know, to their credit, Bob and, and Mike Eon have worked a lot on this, and I've read their way to proposal. And they've made a big difference, both in what, you know, the standards say and how, and how they're, they're, they're processed. Like, you know, through a project proposal. And so, um, my comments to the council on the twenty-second will basically be, you know, don't adopt this amendment as opposed to, as, you know, as you have it before you tonight. Send us back to work and believe it or not, we've already, you know, staff has already done the work and we're really close to coming back to you with a, that we think works an awful lot better, you know, for master plan developments in the PR district. And so you ought to allow us to take that time to process that through and come to you, council, with a planning board recommendation for how the ordinance should be amended relative to MPDs in the PR. Un- unfortunately, the, the two, there are two aspects of this. Bob and Mike have done a great job about how MPD should work like when they exist in the PR district. The second issue that the council has to deal with, and they will have to deal with, is, as Bob has said before, allowing MPDs throughout the PR district is probably no more appropriate than not allowing them at all. And so the second aspect of this is for the council to consider whether or not they want to, when, where they're permitted in the PR. You know, uh, uh, whether it's throughout the PR or in certain limited sections. And, and that, uh, back to you when you were on the ZORs, this was the whole concept of, of notes as it was originally discussed and never got anywhere. And so you've seen all my, I'm not gonna go into detail about this, but, you know, I, I think basically what we need to tell the council, what I will tell the council is, you know, don't adopt the amendment as you have for you this evening, you know. Tell the planning board and staff, go back to work on this, and believe it or not, we'll be at you pretty quick. You know, within a minute to the ordinance, you know, that we think will work an awful lot better. And I guess that's all I have to say at this point. Thanks.
Thank you, Don. Bob, any final thoughts as we wrap up workshop?
Yeah, just, just for reference, uh, uh, pay no attention to anything that appears in the packet before page twenty-five. The, uh, the document that is entitled Proposed Amendments that's dated through March tenth of twenty-one, that's the one you want to pay attention to. Beyond that, that's it. I, I would just say there is no proposed amended version that's going to the city council for next Monday night. Um, they, we've just got, uh, decisions as to whether to adopt or not, but there is no new amended version going to the council for its consideration.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, everyone. Um, so we're at six thirty-five or so. Anything else in the workshop, Bob, or are we good to move on? Okay. Great. So, um, I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one Planning Board Meeting for the City of Saco. We are hosting this evening's meeting through Zoom. There, um, are planning board members and various city staff in attendance with us this evening. My name is Alyssa Bhutat. I am the vice chair of the board and I will be facilitating this evening's, uh, agenda. And with us is also Chair John Gerard. And then Planning Board Members Jeff Broschu, Matt Prebenkel, and I believe Sean Nicholas will be joining us at a certain time and we will announce when he does come in. We also have city staff with us this evening. Uh, the city planner, Bob Hamlin, is with us and Isabel Exley will be helping us throughout the night, um, using Zoom as a platform. We do have multiple items on our agenda with public hearings, and when those public hearings begin, Isabel will give an introduction and explain how the raise hand feature works. And she will be able to help members of the public speak as they are called on. Uh, we also have our council liaison, Jody McPhail with us tonight. And, uh, with that said, um, the first item on our agenda is the minutes of previous meetings, March second and March ninth. I just have a suggestion to the group and I'll, I'll see where it goes, but, um, given that we have two members absent this evening that had a good amount of work on both of those nights within the minutes, I'm wondering if it would be appropriate to table the minutes to give Joyce and Peter a chance to weigh in if they wanted to make any edits to those two nights. So I'll.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Don.
Yes, I'll move that we table the, uh, consideration of the minutes until such time as both Peter and Joyce have had the opportunity to comment on.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I would. You go.
Madam Chair, this is Jeff. I would second for discussion.
Thank you, Jeff, for discussion. Okay. Any discussion of the motion?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I'd like to offer up my, uh, comment. I had one comment from the March second meetings. And that way maybe they could just be included before Peter and Joyce review theirs.
Sure.
So on our packet, page sixty-three, the last paragraph, said Jeff Broschu finds the approval criteria found in two thirty-four sixteen F five D and the additional strand, standards of approval found in subsection H three have not been adequately satisfied and therefore moves to deny the site inventory analysis and master plan development application. And, and this is the point where I think it should be corrected, to make findings of fact to that effect. I think it should read, to deny the ma- site plan master, uh, to deny the site inventory and master plan development. And two, and we should insert, to make reference to the findings voted on previously to that effect. That's one of the reasons I keep bringing it up, that we need to make our findings of facts and vote on them as a board. And I don't want it to sound like we're making up findings of facts. We, as a group, worked through each item and voted on that. They're documented in our minutes. And that was my intent, um, with that final motion, is that we're referencing those findings of facts that we previously voted on. So if we could maybe just make that editing change would be, be helpful. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Bob and Isabel, I'm sure are taking notes on that. Any other discussion about the motion to table these two minutes to a future meeting? Okay, hearing none, I'll, uh, poll members for a vote. Don?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Matt?
Yeah.
And I will vote yes as well. So that will pass four zero. Okay. So the next item on our agenda is a public hearing. Um, it's in regards to one twenty-one Loudoun Road, which is map one oh six lot ten. This is a contract zone amendment recommendation for River Winds Farm and Estate. Um, if you're following along in our packet, it begins on page two sixty-eight. So, as Isabel maybe promotes anyone that is here for this item, I'd like to turn to Bob and just check in to see if there's any new info beyond what we have in our packet.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Um, I endeavored to keep my discussion, um, strictly to contract zone-related, uh, information. As anybody who's perhaps been following Riverwind Farms recently at a different level, and that would be at the city council level, you may know that, uh, these folks have been pursuing a special entertainment permit with the city council. They have made a significant amount of headway at that level, and, uh, uh, I believe that the council, in fact, approved that permit for them, uh, at, at a recent meeting of the council. Uh, a lot of information that went into that action on the part of the council was code enforcement-related. Getting up to date on various items that have been, uh, involved with the previous, uh, site plan approvals. Uh, also, um, requirements having to do with the contract zone that, that dictates the project out here. Uh, I believe that Code Enforcement Office Director Dave Toomey is with us this evening. If the board has any questions at all related to that permit, uh, or, uh, improvements, uh, that have been made recently having to do with code enforcement. Uh, I'd encourage, uh, the board just to be aware, Mr. Toomey's with us and I, I know can respond to those questions.
Great. Thank you, Bob. And yes, I see that Dave did join us. At this time, members, I'd like to move us towards finding, um, the application complete and ask you if you have any questions for Bob regarding the checklist that is on page two sixty-nine of our packet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just have a question because on the packet, the checklist on the packet on page two sixty-nine, I'm sorry, yeah. A little pre- previously, it says that they recently, on two sixty-eight, it says they recently acquired the residence at one oh seven Loudoun Road. This contract zone, as I understand it, would not bridge over to that because they, they own the property, it would be still locked into the map and lot number of the, um, of the applicant's property is at one fifteen Loudoun Road, correct? So they're not, wouldn't be expanding the zone with this new purchase. Is that correct?
That is correct. They would not be expanding the, uh, contract zone to include that lot, correct?
Thank you, Bob. Any other questions, board members, regarding the completeness of the application?
Madam Chair, this is Jeff.
Yes, Jeff.
I move the board find the application submitted for the proposed amendment to the contract zone at one fifteen Loudoun Road to be complete.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a second?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Don.
Yes, I'll second that motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Any discussion of the motion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for votes. Uh, Matt?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. So the motion to find the application complete passes four zero. Okay, um, on to discussion and then, um, after that, we can turn things over to the applicant as well. If we have any direct questions for them, I'll just go around the table and, um, ask board members if you have any specific concerns or questions at this time, um, and to list those concerns. And once we gather them, we can turn to the applicant and also back to Bob and Dave and everyone else who's here with us. Don, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, my concerns basically are with, um, the scope of the proposed activities, uh, that the applicant is looking for under the amended contract zone. I, I, I haven't heard any specified uh, numbers, if you will, of, um, the number of activity, activities that will occur in a, in a particular period of time. Whether or not there are any limits on the number of people that will be in attendance at the, at these activities. And so, uh, in short, uh, those are my concerns at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, I'll turn to you next.
I'm trying to think specifically for discussion. I'm just looking through the, four pieces of criteria that we review, you know, this application by. So, um, while I, I'm sympathetic to the, the time and what the applicant is looking for, I, I'm having, I, I'm having a little bit of trouble here with the, the unu- the unusual nature of the land with the, with the proposed amendment here. Understanding the, um, approvals in the past here, um, I follow those. You know, for the property and where it's located and what they're doing, um, I'm having a hard time with, uh, with the, with the amendments here, being unusual or, uh, being applicable to an unusual nature of, uh, the land or location. I, I see the, I see these activities happening more of a, in a downtown setting. That, that's all. That, that's my major concern here.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Jeff, any, anything you'd like to add right now?
Ye- yes, I would, I would echo, um, Matt on the criteria of, not really sure how we define this as being an unusual parcel of land, considering it's pretty much identical to all the other parcels on that road. In nature or location, um, I have some concerns with it being consistent with the comprehensive plan, um, particularly the two thousand eighteen comprehensive plan. I, I could pull them up and we, maybe when we get further in discussion, um, but particularly with the local economy goals, policies and strategies. Number eight that I had an issue with, um, and then the land use goals and policies. You know, it said very clearly to foster a pattern of land use that respects and builds upon the established settlement pattern of the urban core surrounded by an outlying rural area. And to, you know, a board member of Prebenkel's, uh, you know, comment, I, I tend to agree. A lot of the activities that are described are something you expect to see in a downtown setting. And I'm very uncomfortable with the very open verbiage of self-sponsored events. We have been giving some, some casual guidance as to what they might be, comedy shows and outdoor music venues, but you know, next thing you know, is it, you know, monster truck racing or do we have, you know, uh, another, um, weekend behind the barn event that's happening out there on that street? So, you know, I had concerns with that. I also had some concerns with the amount of, you know, it seems the parking has grown quite a bit, but it hasn't really been, you know, a site plan reviewed for the volume. So there's, there's a lot of issues, but focusing just on those four criteria. Yeah, I've, I've some, some of those are my concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Um, I think the three of you just hit what was on my list, so I have nothing new to add to that. So, and I just want to make everyone who's listening in aware that the criteria that board members keep referencing is found on page two seventy-one of our packet. And there are four items listed there. At this time, Isabel, I believe we have one, one of the applicants or one member from the applicant's team here with us this evening, and it may be appropriate board members for us to turn to her and now that we've listed our concerns, we can, um, get some sort of a, a weigh-in from her on these items.
Um, yeah, Gina Martinez is present for the applicants and she's been promoted and allowed to speak.
Great, thank you. Gina, if you just want to introduce yourself and then we'll give you a few moments to, um, add anything to our conversation based on what you've just heard from board members.
Oh, hi, I'm Gina Martinez and, um, I'm the event manager here at one twenty-one Loudoun Road for River Winds Events. And, um, speaking to, I guess, the, the word self-sponsored events, I originally, um, requested that language change back, of course, when, um, we got shut down due to. back, of course, when we got shut down due to COVID. COVID shut down the wedding industry and we had found ourselves finding a lot of our wedding events and like client booked events, either pulling out or requesting to move their date into the future, 2021, 2022. So we sat here thinking, what are we going to do? Like all the other businesses in the, not only community in Saco, Maine, in the world, had to figure out what they could do to shift and change to keep their business sustainable. And when I talked to the alcohol enforcement in Augusta, I spoke about our catering license and our ability to do self-sponsored events and asked what the criteria was on the state level. And under the type of licensing that we have, I was told that we would have to fill out a self-sponsored event permit for every event that we did here onsite and submit it to them for approval. And I did, I didn't know that it wasn't allowed at the city level, so I went ahead and filled out 12 self-sponsored event permits. Most of them were for gatherings of 50 or less, and then we went up to 100 or less. And I had to tell him what number event it was, how many people were expected, which like I said, I used the maximum I was allowed. And I had, I had to tell them actually what the, what the event was called. So we did that and only to find out that it conflicted with the contract zoning. So you got to know that here in Maine, we have a limited season for doing events here in a barn setting. You get about anywhere from 22 to possibly 30 events that you could possibly book out. And we were basically looking for a way to keep our revenue stream forward. Having the self-sponsored events was actually a good thing for us. It led to some folks coming out that didn't know we were here and actually booking private events, which turned out to be pretty fantastic. I can see the concerns of the council and yourself, the planning board. I refrain from saying the comment, but go behind the barn just because of the nature of that type of event. We're only, our capacity out here in the fire marshals world is 175. So that's sort of the number that we use to keep our events manageable. I think Tim Smith from Tailor Made Events spoke a few weeks ago. We do hire tailor-made events to help us manage our events, park cars, check IDs, check people in with the contact tracing. But I was asked to be more specific about self-sponsored events, so I was thinking about who has reached out to me. I had a dinner theater group from Boston call us that heard about us and they wanted to bring a dinner theater up here and do a sit-down dinner theater murder mystery type show. I thought that was a fantastic idea. We are talking to an outfit out of New Hampshire called Rent-a-K comic. I had used him before at another venue where they would come in on nights that there was nothing booked and have comedy shows. All ticketed events, so we could manage the capacity very well. The music shows, like I said, they were something that we did when we found ourselves with no events happening. A couple of the musical shows that did perform here were actually the bands that were supposed to perform at a wedding. They were already on the schedule to come here, so we just let them come and do their show except to the public. We do a holiday show at Christmas. It's a daytime event from like 1 to 3. We had, we didn't do it last year because of COVID, but 2019, it was fantastic. We had Santa Claus, Mrs. Claus, the Thornton Academy carolers that the horse-drawn carriage come take the kids for rides on the cart. And that's really all we're looking to do, but I can see how it would be frightening to think it, we're not going to be open seven nights a week. We're only, we only did these things on the nights when the weddings were canceled and we usually have weddings on Saturday nights. So I don't know if that clarifies anything or if there's more questions around that.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. I think you did hit on a couple items that board member Gerard had mentioned, but there were other comments regarding just this item and its consistency, this amendment and its consistency with the comprehensive plan. I'm not sure if you want to comment at all on that since that is a big piece of what we have before us this evening as the planning board.
Okay, could someone just clarify that for me as far as? The, I guess I'm not.
Jeff, I'm probably going to turn to you because you had some specific, I think, items within the comprehensive plan that you were looking at.
Sure, Madam Chair. My first one is from the 2018 Comprehensive Plan Update, Section 3, which is Local Economy Implementation Strategies. It's out of the table, Action Number 8. It says, "Avoid locating commercial activities within residential neighborhoods except for strictly regulated home occupations, daycares, or other uses with minimal impact."
So Jeff, I think if you could just phrase that, do you have a question specific to the amendment that is before us as far as, you know, looking for more information on what they're planning or anything specific to Ms. Martinez?
Well, I guess that's, you know, that's the city's goal, right? You know, and I can read the full article, "While the goal of the city is to accommodate good quality commercial development in appropriate locations, the city is also interested in discouraging commercial uses in inappropriate locations. Therefore, it is a policy of the city to avoid the location of commercial activities within residential neighborhoods except for strictly regulated home occupations, daycares, or others with minimal impact. In addition, the city discourages the establishment of commercial enterprises along major streets except for those areas specifically designated for commercial use in the land use policies." So my question to the applicant would be, given that criteria, how would you describe the proposed use of self-regulated events and the examples given would fit into the city's goals as stated in the comprehensive plan?
Thank you, Jeff. Ms. Martinez, if you'd like to jump in with any response, if not, I can also turn to other board members so that they can, you know, phrase additional direct questions.
Okay, well, I'd stop by saying that it's the nature of the property is we're 160 acres and the owner has the other abutting properties. And as far as hosting, doing the self-hosted events, again, they were something we did in a split situation that was out of the ordinary. And I know the city would like to be able to monitor and manage it as well. And my idea would be to, before, I would propose sending one to the state for their approval, perhaps passing it through the city first. And again, this isn't something that where every weekend we're going to start booking all this open, self-hosted, self-sponsored situations. We're hoping that we get back to business as usual. We were just hoping not to be caught in another situation where business as usual comes to a grinding halt and we can't sustain the business.
Okay, thank you. Other board members, Don, Matt, any other questions right now following up on your original concerns, Don?
Yeah, let me, let me just run down through the four criteria that we need for approval, if I can quickly, relative to amending the contract zone. The first hurdle we and the applicant have to get over is determining that the rezoning is for land with an unusual nature of location. And so it's incumbent upon the applicant here in this particular case to demonstrate to the planning board that the land is of an unusual, an unusual nature or location such that the amendments to the contract zone that they're asking for are appropriate. And so it's incumbent upon the applicant to demonstrate that to us. Secondly, applicant needs to demonstrate that the rezoning is consistent with comprehensive plan. And I'll point to several sections of the comprehensive, in the 2000, you know, Matt, I mean, I'm sorry, Jeff, talked about the 2018 Comprehensive Plan Update, but I'm going to go back to the 2011 Comprehensive Plan, specifically Chapter 5, Community Goals and Policies, Section I, Recreation and Open Space. And under that section, Local Goals, one of the goals is to maintain areas west of the Turnpike as a rural environment. And sub-paragraph 8 under that section says, "The city's land use regulations should designate much of the area west of the Turnpike as a rural conservation district in which the objective is to maintain a rural pattern of use." Under Chapter 6, Land Use Goals and Policies, Paragraph 31 states, "The city's policy should be to work to retain the city's farm and forest land in natural resource use while allowing the owners of this land to have reasonable use of the property." In Paragraph 33, it further states, "Within areas designated rural conservation areas, we should allow non-residential uses that are compatible with a working rural landscape." Turning to Item 3 under the approval criteria, that criteria being the rezoning is consistent with, but not limited to the existing uses and permitted uses within the original zone, more specifically the underlying zone before it was contract zoned. And so it's incumbent upon the applicant to demonstrate that the uses that they're proposing are pretty much consistent with and no more, have no more impacts than would any of the permitted and conditional uses that are permitted or that are allowed in the underlying zone. And so it's incumbent upon the applicant to demonstrate that to the, to the planning board. Lastly, under Item or Approval Criteria 4, "The conditions proposed are sufficient to meet the intent of this section." And very specifically, it's incumbent upon the applicant to demonstrate to the planning board that whatever their conditions, whatever conditions they're imposing on their operations are sufficient to meet all of the things that we previously discussed. And so with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn back to the applicant if they have anything further to add.
Ms. Martinez, anything at this time they'd like to add in response to?
Sure, sure. I mean, what we did here didn't change the scope of the landscape or the ruralness of the property. Whether you have 100 people come and attend a comedy event or you have 100 people come and attend a wedding, we still operated within the allowable allotment of time. We closed everything down. Quiet time was 10:00 PM. Everybody, all the guests left the property. Again, this isn't something that the original contract zoning said weddings, anniversaries, birthdays and horse shows. So if you have 100 people coming to a horse show or 100 people coming to a wedding or an anniversary and you have an acoustic duo playing or a DJ and those people come, attend the event, it's a five-hour event, it's not open, you know, all hours, this isn't Las Vegas over here. Then they, we shut the event down, the event ends and they leave. Again, I used some of the entertainers who were left jobless because their weddings canceled. So, I mean, I don't know how that changes the scope of the ruralness of the area. It's basically doing the same thing in the same five hours that we would have done, whether the client who rented the venue invited all their guests, came and left, or we use the venue on a self-sponsored permit. And again, the permits will dictate, and I know Jeff, I think you mentioned, how do we know what's going on and how many people will be in attendance? I have no problem putting self-sponsored permits to the planning board. I think Bob Hamlin is the one who has permission in the site plan to approve anything out of the, you know, different rules of the contract zone. And I, we have no problem doing that. And I'll be honest with you, for 2021, if 2021 plays out the way it's supposed to, I have a signed contract client booked in the barn starting on May 1st with the very last client on October 30th. Weddings every weekend with no deviation. The self-sponsored events was a backup plan that was legal to do in the state's eye. And again, we watched restaurants start selling alcohol to go. We watched restaurants taking public spaces and parking lots and sidewalks to make space for, keep their restaurants going. And I think that's what we pretty much did just by changing the nature of the guest. We still operated, everything else the same.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martinez. Matt, if you have anything to add, let me know right now, otherwise. Do you want to jump in, Matt?
I don't have anything else to add, Madam Chair, or any additional questions.
Okay, thank you, Matt. So board members, we still have to have a public hearing on this item. We also, you know, if you're looking to have some more discussion, we do have Dave Toomey here with us this evening as well from the Code Enforcement Office. If you needed any questions answered there.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Don.
I would move to open the public hearing at this point.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, this is Jeff. I will second.
Thank you, Jeff. I'll poll members. Matt?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And vice chair will vote yes, so we will open the public hearing at this time. Isabel will step in to assist members of the public and she can explain how to use the features on Zoom to be recognized.
Yep, so members of the public who are in attendance, if you would like to speak on this item, just use the digital raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen or star nine if you're calling in from a cell phone.
Thank you, Isabel. And any members of the public being recognized to speak, if you could just state your name and your address for us right before you begin, that would be great. Thank you.
I don't have anyone with their hands raised to speak. There were a couple of public comments that were submitted in your packet already. Oh, there is one person now with their hand up. This person is Inga Brown. You've been allowed to talk. Just unmute yourself.
Yes, hi, good evening. Inga Brown, 161 Simpson Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have tremendous sympathy for all of the businesses who've really struggled under COVID and their creativity and how original they had to pivot was really remarkable on so many levels. Having said that, I did submit a letter for the packet this evening. I'm not sure if you saw my letter. I certainly don't want to read it verbatim, but I certainly echo many of the things that the planning board members have said that this expansion of use to self-sponsored events is certainly very commercial in nature and has a intensity of use on the land. I will say that in reading the contract zone and reviewing the materials, I do have numerous questions related to this expansion this evening that's on the table. And I have some questions. They're in no particular order. And I apologize if I'm making some incorrect assumptions, but I am basing these questions on the information. And I apologize if I'm making some incorrect assumptions, but I am basing these questions on the information in the packet. So, first off, I know Deputy Chief Pendleton raised the question of sprinklers and how this property is operating, since it is a place of public assembly, it is operating as a lodging and rooming occupancy and therefore would need to be sprinkled. And so based on the applicant's desire to expand its use, I guess I have more questions on whether there are sprinklers. I know at the council meeting on March eighth, Mr. Toomey said that the firewall in the barn had been updated, but there was no mention of sprinklers. I'm also very confused over what the definition of a public place of assembly actually does to this contract zone agreement. It says that a place of public assembly may include facilities for eating and drinking and for overnight accommodations, provided that, you know, the required licenses and permits have been acquired. And I'm not sure how that squares up with what they're already doing. So, for example, can they offer eating to the public as a place of public assembly? Can they offer drink to the public as a place of public assembly? They are already offering overnight accommodations to the public. I'm not sure if, if the planning board or the council is aware, but on the River Winds Farm website, they are listed, the Austin House is a destination location. It can be rented by members of the public. So, in my mind, that perhaps does not square with the permitted uses of these private events. I might not understand something about the definition, however, of public place of assembly. So I have a question about if that's a permitted use. I would say that the language and similar events that's in the contract zone agreement, certainly I would recommend to council that that needs much broader clarification. I get very nervous with vague language like that. And as Ms. Martinez said on the March eighth council meeting, she found that language very vague herself and it kind of gave her the opportunity, if you will, to, to try some public events. The website for River Winds Farm states that weddings can occupy up to two hundred fifty people. That seems to be perhaps in conflict with the a hundred and seventy-five that Ms. Martinez mentioned a couple moments ago. So like Chairman Gerard, I have questions about capacity of, of people on the property, the frequency. Most contract zone agreements, I believe, would have some kind of parameters. And I think that, just to remind the planning board, as you know, you voted in two thousand eighteen against a wedding barn on Heath Road and that was a unanimous decision that it was a commercial use in the C one zone. And I, I'll leave my comments there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Inga. Isabel, is there anyone else with their hand raised?
There is no one else with their hands raised at this time. Oh, I'm sorry. I spoke too soon. The next person identified is Margaret Mills. Margaret, I've just allowed you to talk. You'll just have to unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Mills. I live at one sixty-eight Simpson Road. And I have very, very few comments. It's just that I do live in the C one zone. I'm very happy to live in a rural area of Saco and I've read the comprehensive plan. I've looked at it and my understanding is that the rural area is supposed to be preserved for lightly settled residential and agricultural use and open space. And I'm disappointed that a commercial activity would be here. I think a barn wedding is exciting and wonderful and romantic, however, that's not what Saco decided when they put together the comprehensive plan. They said no commercial activities in the C one zone except a very limited capacity. So I would say please keep the country, country. And consider that if you expand beyond the weddings, the anniversaries, the birthdays and the horse shows, then it's really hard to define what you would be limiting the activities to. Ms. Martinez talks about every single weekend, May through October. But if we open up this amendment, doesn't it mean that she can use, excuse me, that the business can use the building space three hundred sixty-five days of the week, of the year, rather? And I, I think that's a little bit excessive for the C one zone. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Isabel, anyone else?
Yeah, the next person on my list is identified as Susan Littlefield. Susan, you'll just have to unmute yourself.
Okay. Hi, this is Susan Littlefield. I just want to make a general comment.
Can you just state your address also for the record?
Yeah, one seventy-one Simpson Road.
Thank you.
I did write a letter to the planning board and so I'm just gonna kind of say quickly what I, I said. I've, I've been very concerned about the use of contract zones, as, as you probably know. And one problem I really see is everybody comes in and says, well, this is a special place. It's unique and special. And so it gets passed because it's unique and special for this business that wants to be run, but can the neighbors go and say, we're unique and special? So please give us a contract zone to not allow commercial use in our neighborhoods. That's, that's my point. I mean, it's really simple. There's, there's no way to defend yourself against these contract zones. Okay, that's the end of my comment.
Thank you, Susan. Isabel, how?
I don't have anyone else on my list with their hand raised.
Okay, you'll let us know if that changes. Board members, we've heard from several members of the public. I think Isabel has her eye out for any last minute raising of hands.
No, there is no one else with their hand raised.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Don.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, this is Jeff. I'll second.
Thanks, Jeff. I'll poll members for a vote. Matt?
Yeah.
Don?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And Vice Chair will vote yes. So the public hearing is now closed. Okay, turning back to board members, we obviously have some notes from the public hearing that the applicant may want to address. Any other board member thoughts at this time, based on the public hearing? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Martinez, if you would like to add anything in regards to the public hearing comments we just received?
Sure, yes. We, we've have all the appropriate permits and licenses in place. We have a health inspection license, we have a catering license for food and beverage. We have our dance license from the State Fire Marshal's Office. As in terms of our capacity, our barn capacity is actually two hundred and eighty-eight. Unrealistically, we would never have a capacity at that level because that requires no tables and no chairs. Standing room only. You would never have a five hour event or any type of event that would have no tables and chairs. Sit-down seated capacity in the barn is a hundred and seventy-five. If we want to use the indoor-outdoor space or have a total outdoor event, it is two fifty. So those are where the capacity levels are set. As far as the sprinkler goes, from, directly from the Fire Marshal's office, I have here back in two thousand eighteen, it changed, the sprinkler rulings changed. It's the NFPA one oh one, section twelve dot three dot five dot one, any building containing one or more assembly, uh, assembly occupancies where the aggregate occupant load of the assembly exceeds three hundred shall be protected by a sprinkler system. He told me that i- unless we were over three hundred indoors, then we did not need a sprinkler system. And that our door capacity for egress is a hundred and eighty people per door. So I think that, you know, we, we don't operate three hundred and sixty-five days a year. I'm too old for that. Our occupancy season is May through November fifteenth. With the only time we do anything outside of that seasonal zone, we send a permission to the city planner. So we're talking twenty-six to thirty weeks.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
And weekends. The primarily thing here, again, I'll say it again, I, I hope Simpson Road understands it's weekends, weekend wedding or private events is what the majority of the goal was to, to, to operate this business. And then we had, I have to say it again, a COVID situation where every business struggled to figure out how they were going to pay their bills, pay their staff, keep their vendors employed, pay their city taxes. So we just tried to do what we thought was permissible. And you know, we, I, I, we didn't understand, I guess. And, and here we are figuring out that the contract zone language was the, what was the tie-up. So I figured adding the self-sponsored event option so that if in the future we needed to do something out of the scope of the private events, we would have that option on the table.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Board members, at this time, I'll, I'll turn it back to you. Again, this item is before us this evening as a contract zone amendment and our ultimate goal is to either forward a recommendation to the city council of whether or not this existing contract zone should be amended. And we do have the four standards that we've been discussing, found on page two seventy-one of our packet. We've had the public hearing. We've heard from the applicant several times. So at this time, any other board discussion would be appropriate, I think. If anyone would like to jump in.
Madam Chair, this is Jeff.
Sure, Jeff.
I guess I'm gonna go ahead and start making motions. I just want to note out that we'll be, I'll be making them in the positive as it was recommended by council, during some of our previous trainings. So I move the board find that the proposed amendment is for land with an unusual nature or location.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Don.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. So with the motion from Jeff and a second from Don, I'll take up any discussion on the motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Don.
I think I said previously that it was incumbent upon the applicant to demonstrate to the planning board that this particular property was of an unusual nature or an unusual location within the district. Indicating that the contract zone amendment should be approved. I have found nothing indicating to me that there is anything particularly unusual in nature or unusual in location of the particular property in relation to any other property within that zone.
Thank you, Don. Any other board member comments, discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for a vote on this first standard. And again, the motion was made by Jeff and seconded by Don. Jeff?
No.
Matt?
No.
Don?
No.
Vice Chair votes no, so that standard will fail for, with four votes in the negative.
Madam Chair, this is Jeff.
Yes, Jeff.
I move the board find that the proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Don.
I'll second.
Thank you. Section of the motion.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, Don.
Looking at the comprehensive plan again, and, and the sections are outlined. The, the comprehensive plan is obviously looking to allow the owners of the property to have reasonable use of the property. What I find is the current use is permitted under the contract zone already provide. Provide what I believe are more than reasonable use of the property. And unfortunately, what I'm, what I'm hearing is the proposed additional uses, I think, depart significantly from maintaining, and I'll quote the comprehensive plan, quote, "the rural pattern of use," unquote. And my additional concern is that the proposed additional uses depart significantly from being, quote, "compatible with a working rural landscape," unquote. And so my concern is with over a hundred and sixty acres under the control of the various River Winds business entities, not only will the proposed additional uses embark, embark upon OS compatible uses for the district, the available wind area sets the stage, I think, for a significant departure from, and again, I'll quote, "comprehensive plan," quote, "maintaining a working, a working rural landscape," end quote, and maintaining, quote, "the rural pattern of use," end quote.
Thank you, Don. Any other discussion? Yes, Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Geez. I'm sorry, I just hit my iPad and lost my page. All right. I just would like to, to touch the, you know, Mr. Drive brought up some very good points from the two thousand eleven comprehensive plan. My review kind of focusing on the two thousand eighteen comprehensive plan update. And I have, you know, as I read this, and I quote, "While the goal of the city is to accommodate good quality commercial development in appropriate locations, the city is also interested in discouraging commercial use in inappropriate locations. Therefore, it is a policy of the city to avoid the location of commercial activities within residential neighborhoods, except for strictly regulated home occupations, daycares, or others with minimal, minimum impact." Additionally, the city discourages the establishment of commercial enterprises along major streets, except for those areas specifically designated for commercial use and land use policies, end quote. And that's where I really have a difficult time. I think that, you know, previous members of, of this board, when they offered up a positive recommendation, I think it, it kind of makes some sense. If you want to have an equine show, you, you have it where the horses are. If you want to have a themed wedding that is involving a rural rustic barn, you don't try to build a barn downtown and make it look rural. So those uses were very appropriate and I understand and feel for their creativity, but I have a real difficult time with the very opened nature of self-sponsored events, not knowing what it could be. And as Mr. Drive pointed out, you know, there's a vast amount of land up there that, you know, do all the other neighbors decide to start doing this as well? And, and I really, really don't think for anyone who chooses to live out in a rural zone, allow them to, to have that impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other board member discussion? Okay, hearing none. Again, we're looking at the second standard. The motion was made by Jeff, seconded by Don. And I'll call for votes at this time. Don?
No.
Matt?
No.
Jeff?
No.
And the Vice Chair will vote no. So that standard will fail with four votes in the negative. Back to the board, we're looking now at the third standard as we work our way down the list.
Madam Chair, this is Jeff.
Yes, Jeff.
I move the board find that the proposed amendment, or contract zone amendment, is consistent with but not limited to the existing uses and I'm sorry, let me restart. I move that the board find that the proposed rezoning, I move that the board find the proposed contract zone amendment is consistent with, but not limited to the existing uses and permitted uses within the original the existing uses and permitted uses within the original zone.
Okay, using Jeff's last motion there. Is there a second?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Don.
I'll second.
Okay. Board member discussion? Don?
Yeah. Madam Chair, let me, let me just say, you know, for, for the board, I looked very specifically down through all the permitted and conditional uses that are allowed in the district out there, and I guess my concern is that particularly those that are not necessarily rural in nature still don't rise to the level of concern I have, you know, for contact concentrated traffic flow periods and for off-hour noise associated with the uses, potential uses proposed under the current amendment. And for that reason, I think that in general, self-sponsored events are not consistent with existing uses and permitted uses within the original zone.
Thank you, Don. And the other board member discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for votes on this third standard. The motion was made by Jeff and seconded by Don. Jeff?
No.
Matt?
No.
Don?
No.
And the vice chair will vote no. So that standard will fail with four votes in the negative. We have one standard left in this list of four.
Madam Chair, this is Jeff.
Yes, Jeff.
I move the board, I move the board find that the conditions proposed are sufficient to meet the intent of this section.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a second?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Don.
I will second.
Thank you. Discussion of the motion? Don?
Yeah, once again, Madam Chair, I, the problem I've had with this all along is the details of operations are just too general, and there are just too many insufficient details available on operating parameters. I'm worried about operating hours, occupancy for individual events, the number of events in a given time period, the total wind area that's dedicated to use for particular events and so forth. These are all missing details that, to me, make it impossible to determine if the uses proposed under the contract amendment depart from consistency with the concept of plan and whether or not they're consistent with other permitted and conditional uses for the district. And so with that, in general, my sense is that there are just insufficient details to determine whether or not it meets the intent of the section.
Thank you, Don. Anything else to add from other board members for discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for votes on this fourth standard. Again, the motion was made by Jeff and seconded by Don. Matt?
No.
Don?
No.
Jeff?
No.
And the vice chair will vote no, so that fourth standard fails with four votes in the negative. Okay, board members, I know we have our council liaison here with us tonight, but we also have another motion that may wrap up our findings from this evening so that we can forward up one recommendation to the city council for this item.
Madam Chair, this is Jeff.
Yes.
I move that the board forward a negative recommendation to the city council for the contract zone amendment submitted on behalf of the applicant River Wind Farms, River Winds Farms, and estate that would allow a place of public assembly use to be amended so as to include, quote-unquote, "self-sponsored" events.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a second?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Don.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. More discussion? Okay, hearing none, call for votes on this. Don?
No. Oh, I'm sorry. It's a, it's a negative recommendation. I'm sorry. I misunderstood. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Don. Jeff?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And the vice chair will vote yes. So the motion for a negative recommendation has passed for votes in positive. Okay, thank you, board members. Thank you to the applicant, members of the public. Bob, is there anything else you need from us right now on this item?
Madam Chairwoman, that, that will do it very well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So moving on to the next item on our agenda this evening, we have a public hearing, and this is for a request to rezone three parcels in the West Residential Zone on the January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one council adopted zoning map to be rezoned to rural conservation. So our goal this evening is to obviously review the application, have a public hearing, and then we will be making a recommendation to the city council. At this time, I'll ask Bob if he has any new info beyond what is in our packet, and this item begins on page oh-two of our packet. Bob, if you have anything new to add?
I don't, Madam Chairwoman, but I would take the opportunity, if I may, just to let those who may be watching the meeting this evening, this is specifically about three properties, the owners of which have requested a rezoning. Currently, these properties exist in what is the R1D zone today, which implies a medium-density residential zoning district in fairly short order on April eleventh, with the adoption of the new zoning ordinance, other ordinances, and also an updated zoning map. This will become the West Residential Zone. These three properties are fairly close to the zoning boundary that separates the West Residential Zone from what will be the Rural Conservation Zone. And there's recognition given on the primary requester here, if you will, the Fendersons, that if, in fact, they were able to change their zoning from, from West Residential to Rural Conservation, that they would be able to potentially host a commercial solar energy installation on their property. Such a use as a conditional use in the Rural Conservation Zone, it is not an allowed use in the West Residential Zone. So that's pretty much, as I understand it, what is prompting this request from the Fendersons. I think the Fendersons and Pattersons both are cognizant of what's involved here and recognize that once a recommendation is arrived at by the planning board that this issue will ultimately be decided by the city council. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Bob. Board members, any questions on this request for Bob? I know I called it an application, but we, it's, it's more of a request. We don't have any sort of an application that we're looking at.
Madam Chair, this is Jeff.
Yes, Jeff.
Not really sure if this is so much for Mr. Hamlin or there are representatives from the, you know, possible system developers. I was reading through the comprehensive plan, and it speaks of trying to, you know, reserve and maintain agricultural land for future use. And, you know, my initial thought is, well, yeah, I mean, they're gonna put solar panels and everything remains the same. But then I started thinking, do they use some sort of, you know, weed control to try to minimize the growth from this very fertile land up around these solar panels? You know, all the seeds that are there just from Mother Nature and without it being harvested as a traditional farm plot. You know, Mother Nature wants to take over, and would twenty-five or thirty years of spraying and whatever they're gonna put on there actually cause erosion and depletion of the soil where the soil was no longer viable for farming? It is kind of one of my, one of my thoughts.
Thank you, Jeff. Don and Matt, first, I'll just turn to you if you have any other discussion items to add to this before we maybe turn back to Bob. Don, yeah?
Yeah, I understand Jeff's concern. I guess my thinking at this point is that might be the kinds of issues that more appropriately might be examined in site plan if the proposed project was to move to site plan, and I assume it would, Bob, given the scope of it. You know, at this point, I'm trying, I'm trying to concentrate on the issue of whether or not, you know, that, that particular area should be rezoned as requested, and so I'm still thinking about that and have some thoughts that I'll share with the board later about this, but there would be a number of concerns, obviously, Jeff, as the proposal came forward for a solar panel farm out there as to how it would all be handled, because if you recall, one of the issues that was talked about in, not so few was talked about in Zoor's, but it was talked about at the planning board level when we were moving the ordinance up is, I think Dick had, Dick Lambert, former code enforcement officer, had opined on several things that might be done to restore the land once the panels were, you know, no longer being used, the facility was being shut down, and what would be done to reclaim the land. Those are all very significant issues, no question about it. And your issues are no rest, no less relevant, you know, as to, as to how the property is maintained while the, you know, the solar farm operation is, is in progress, and so but once again, I would probably sit back and say, well, that would certainly be something I'd want to examine and explore very carefully, you know, as we go through site plan on this. For the time being, I'd suggest that the issue is, is more generally is the rezoning appropriate? You know, for that area of Saco.
Thank you, Don. Just adding to that and echoing what you just said, Don, I agree. I think the, the primary focus of us this evening is the actual zoning of the parcel, and then beyond that, it's truly up to the landowners as to what they do with it. They may, you know, there may be a point in time where this solar array isn't even what they intend to do with the land any longer. But what we're being tasked with is is determining if a rezoning of those parcels is appropriate, and then that will open the door to the uses within that new zone potentially. Matt, do you have anything else to add right now?
No, nothing else to add other than I agree with Don. Looking at this solely as whether it's appropriate to rezone it and not evaluating the potential solar energy farm out there. Not what we're looking for right this moment. So nothing, no additional questions right now.
Okay, Don, yes?
Just one additional comment before we go into public hearing. Looking very generally at the comprehensive plan again this afternoon and finding specifically in, in the March, or the two thousand and eleven comprehensive plan, Figure six-two of that plan is a, is a map showing Saco detailed wind use designations that were that were intended, if you will, through the conference plan. And I note only, and unless I'm misinterpreting the map, the area that we're talking about, the properties that we're talking about were designated in the comprehensive plan as low-density residential. And that's what the plan intended. And so rezoning back from low-density residential, the LDRD designation in that Figure six-two of the comp plan, rezoning from that would be obviously a departure from what the plan intended. And so I think the board needs to take that into consideration as we move forward on this, this evening.
Thank you, Don. Bob, do you have anything else to add right now as we head towards a public hearing?
I would encourage the board to recognize that the board has not always agreed with the previous comprehensive plans, in fact, has departed from certain recommendations in the recent past. I would encourage the board to visualize properties that we're talking about. Are these, are the Fenderson and Patterson properties on the cusp of becoming low-residential developed properties? Or are they agricultural properties? Are there crops? Are there livestock that are being maintained on these properties? Hopefully, we'll get the opportunity to ask that question of Mr. and Mrs. Fenderson and Mr. and Mrs. Patterson and potentially Ben Patterson, who is a grandson of the Pattersons and contemplating acquiring the farm from his grandparents. I understand what Don, the point Don has made as far as the future land use plan goes, and I guess I would suggest that some years back, when a comprehensive plan consultant and comprehensive plan committee and the implementation committee took a place, took a position on where to draw a line between what was then R1D and, and make a, create a boundary between that and the C1 zone. The line had to be drawn, drawn somewhere, but what was the basis for that boundary being located? And I wonder if any board member can answer that question. Was it a natural boundary, perhaps such as Deep Brook? Or was it a, some perhaps more arbitrary boundary that somebody started with a magic marker and said, well, let's start right here, and drew the boundary? And I'm asking you to, the board, to consider, what are the uses out there now? What are the owners of the properties' intentions with those uses for the foreseeable future? And what have those uses been for the past, in fact, several, not years, not decades, but several generations?
Thank you, Bob. Don, I see your hand up, but before we move on to more discussion, Bob, I just have a question for you regarding, you know, the parties that are requesting this. Would it be appropriate for us to have them weigh in during our discussion, or would it be appropriate if they're here for them to just weigh in during the public hearing?
Oh, I think either would be fine, but I think above all, I think it's important to be addressed, for the board to be addressed by these individuals. I've, I've talked with both, both parties, all three parties, the Fendersons and the Pattersons and the younger generation of Pattersons, and I just found their request to be rather compelling.
Okay. So board members, just keep that in mind, that there may be people from this request waiting to speak to us, and Don, I'll turn to you now.
Very simply, very quickly, Bob makes an excellent point. When we were talking about and considering years ago under the comprehensive plan, what the property west of Deep Brook should be in general, there was significant discussion about whether or not that was an appropriate residential development expansion, if you will. And so to Bob's point, you know, just because the Saco detailed land use designation map in the comp plan shows those areas west of Deep Brook as being included in low-density residential development, there was discussion, there was remaining, you know, angst or, or, you know, reservations, if you will, about whether or not that was really appropriate zoning, you know, for that area. To Bob's point, he makes that point, and it's an excellent point.
Thank you, Don. Okay, board members, yep, Jeff, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I think it's, you know, it's very
Okay, Madam Chair. Yeah, I think it's, you know, it's very, it's an interesting, interesting thought to have, you know, family land that's been for generations. Um, and that, you know, they're, they're trying to find creative ways to, you know, maybe keep it in the family. And it's also very, um, you know, unique because it, it almost stays somewhat, you know, it's a, a very less intense use, you know, it's very stagnant. I guess the question comes in is do people view solar farm as being rural in nature? Is it very industrial looking or is it very rural looking? And I guess that would be an, an opinion, um, uh, that we each hold as individual citizens of the town. But I, I think it'd be really nice, uh, and, and to hear, particularly if Mr. Hamlet says their comments are very compelling from these property owners and, you know, what their long range plan is, um, to hopefully, you know, retain this property as a historical, larger parcel that kind of was the formation of our community. So I'd like to hear from them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, Isabel, I'll turn to you if you know if there are any members of these families, any of the requesters here with us this evening, it might be appropriate to promote them.
Um, sure, I have definitely seen a couple of people. Just give me one second to grab them. Hold on one second. Um, Linda Fenderson very helpfully raised her hand, so I'm just going to call on her first, if that's okay. And Linda, you should be all set to unmute.
Okay, Linda, if you just want to introduce yourself to the board if you'd like to speak, and then if there are other members that you know are here tonight, we can definitely promote them as well. Linda, I can see that you're unmuted. I don't know if Isabel can help if you're trying to speak.
Linda, we, we can't quite hear you yet. Um, I'm not sure. Um, I'm going to try to promote Linda, a panelist and see if that helps.
Okay, thank you, Isabel.
Meantime, um, Ben is on and, um, I'm going to allow him to speak.
Great.
And you'll just have to unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Ben Patterson. Um, can you all hear me?
Yes, Ben, thank you.
Okay, my, um, fiance and I are currently in the process of purchasing my grandparents' farm, Carolyn Tate Patterson's farm, uh, which is 107 New County Road, um, which is part of what's, what would be rezoned with this, oh, sorry, 105 New County Road. Um, in a butts the Fenderson's property. I currently have livestock on the property and back when the zoning was changed from rural to residential. Um, I know my grandfather Tate Patterson of the Fendersons had specifically asked the city to retain us as rural or what's now conservation, um, because we have livestock, we're currently farming. And neither us nor the Fendersons have any intent on creating a residential property with either of these properties. Um, I know you, Linda, isn't able to speak because your microphone is probably not working. Uh, but I'm sure that's very similar to what the Fendersons are, are wanting to do, uh, with their property by putting the solar panels on it, um, sort of allowing them to have the, the income from that. And towards, I, I know we're not speaking towards the solar panels, um, but I know there were several questions from Jeff regarding that. The solar panels, my understanding from where they would be, we, we wouldn't be able to see them. You can't see them from the road. You can't, we can't see them from our property. And it still is in relative agriculture in nature in that you can have livestock fenced in. They have to put a giant fence around them anyway. Um, and in terms of if you're, you know, anything else, it's that type of land use can't be any worse than, you know, agriculture from, you know, the 50s or the 40s in terms of nature. But we're, we're really looking to get ourselves back to this rural conservation district because that's, that's our future use and our current use. Um, we're, we're not allowed to have livestock. We've been grandfathered because we've had them for generations. What are their current use? Um, we're, we're not supposed to have them essentially. So in, it was really arbitrary where they drew the line. They put it at the end of our property. And it really should have been just on the other side of the, the Fenderson's property towards Deep Brook.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Um, Isabel, do you know if we've had any luck with Linda as well, or anyone else?
I just asked Linda to unmute. Um, Linda, you'll just have to unmute.
I'm right here.
Hi, new here? Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, no, like I said, I was upset that Don and Matt, uh, seemed to think that we weren't, um, we shouldn't be in, um, maybe I misunderstood them, in, uh, rural agriculture. Um, we, we, this is, this farm has been in, uh, farming for over five generations and it still is, and we intend to keep it that way. And the fenced in area that the solar panels were, uh, we hope to have, um, were going to be a, uh, ability for us to have animals inside a fenced in area, which fencing is very expensive. Um, uh, I don't understand at all why we ever even got out of rural agriculture. We should have been, um, you know, we should never have been taken out of, um, out of it. So, um, like I said, Ben, Ben was right. The, the, the hills in the back of the farm are hardly seen at all from the road. He can't even see them from his property. Um, the, the, i- it can do nothing but benefit the city if we ever need power in our area when the power grid goes down. It could never be anything but helpful. It's clean energy. Um, it's using the hills that we don't use for farming. Um, I, I don't understand why this doesn't just go right through. I mean, after all, it was promised that we wouldn't get out of a farming area. Um, so, um, yeah.
The solar panels go, there's going to be no, he said something about erosion, there's going to be no erosion at all.
There'll be no erosion with the solar panels. They're, they're, they're not going to redo the, the land. They're going to use the existing land to put the solar panels on. The only thing they're going to do is build a road into it.
Thank you.
Um, Isabel, a second, I make one point quickly.
Alan is there too. He could talk to you about that.
Oh, yeah, I should have mentioned that, um, the, um, folks from Blue Wave Solar that, uh, the Fendersons have been working with are on as well, if you wanted to hear from them. Um, I just wanted to make a point real quick that Ben had touched in with what he said. Um, so in the zoning that was adopted by the council on January 11th, it actually makes agriculture with livestock, um, which, as you may be aware, the uses of agriculture and agriculture with livestock are, um, two separate uses in our newly adopted ordinance. It makes agriculture with livestock, um, not allowed in the area, the West Residential Zone where, um, both the Fendersons and the Pattersons are. So Ben's, um, point that this would be a grandfathered non-conforming use is another point that I think is valid for this discussion that I just wanted to reiterate. Is that it's currently actually, you know, grandfathered non-conforming since they've had, uh, they've had livestock there for so long.
Thank you for reinforcing that, Isabel. And you have someone else that you may promote right now?
Um, yep, I had, uh, seen Alan Robertson from Blue Wave Solar with his hand raised. Um, just going to allow him to talk if, if you would find that appropriate.
Yes.
Thank you, Linda. So Alan, you're unmuted now. If you just want to introduce yourself to the members of the board?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Madam Chair. Alan Robertson, Blue Wave Solar, uh, formerly before COVID of Boston, Massachusetts, and formerly before COVID of Portland, Maine. Uh, I know, I know we're not here to, tonight to discuss the solar specifics, but there has been a fair amount of solar talk, which is, which dovetails nicely with what Linda Fenderson, John Fenderson are trying to do here, which is, you know, primarily keep, keep the, the farm exactly that a farm. And, and one, one item I wanted to bring up was, was our plan to use the Fenderson's, um, livestock to, uh, provide O and M within the array. And you heard Linda refer to this, um, having, having, you know, sheep grazed within, within the fence line. And don't be, I, I didn't want anyone to be mistaken. That is exactly our intent. Um, we're doing that. Um, that's our intent on this project as well as about, about a half dozen elsewhere in the state. We've had, uh, rather lengthy conversations with the DEP as well as, um, you know, other organizations, agricultural organizations in the state, um, about this, and, um, we're well on our way to do exactly that on the Fenderson's property. Uh, I look forward to, first of all, I, I understand when we brought this project to you, it's been probably one of the least opportune times to talk about changing things amidst a comprehensive plan adjustment, but uh, I appreciate you taking the time to listen to us and I, I look forward to bringing the actual solar project to you, uh, given this goes through tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Okay, board members, we've heard from several, um, requesters, I'll call them for this item. Um, we have yet to formally open a public hearing. If anyone would find that appropriate at this time.
Adam Chair.
Yes.
I'll open a public, I'll move to open a public hearing.
Thank you, Don. We have some echoing, um, I think it might be, yeah, if you're unmuted right now as one of the requesters, great. Um, is there a second?
Madam Chair, this is Jeff. I will second.
Thank you, Jeff. I'll pull board members to open the public hearing. Matt?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And the vice chair will vote yes. So the public hearing is now open. Um, Isabel, we'll turn to you again to see if anyone is waiting with their hand raised.
Um, so if there's anyone who hasn't previously spoken, who would like to speak on this item, um, if you could just use the digital raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen, we'll promote you to speak. Um, I, I did see a hand go up briefly. Uh, I saw a hand from identifier Carol. Carol, I just allowed you to talk. You'll just have to unmute yourself.
Okay.
Carol, if you can give us your name and address, that would be helpful for the record.
It's Carol and Tate Patterson, 105 New County Road. And Tate is going to speak.
Great.
Yes, I'm Kate. Uh, we've been here, well, I've been here four generations. I'm the fourth generation and like Ben said, we're going to sell the farm to Ben, my grandson. And reason why I'm son, because he's interested in agriculture. He's raising beef cattle here and we do hay for crop and stuff. And I think we should be zoned back to conversation, uh, conservation. Zoning because Ben's only 23 and he's planting the farm and, uh, and I told him I'll sell the farm as long as you're there to pass it on to your next generation when you have kids. So I guess I'm, that's about what I'll have to say. I'm all for rezoning it to con- conservation, agriculture and planning and been a farm for 150 years and we've been neighbors with the Fendersons that many years. So, and I guess both Fendersons and us were still going to be farming, so. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Isabel, do we have any other members waiting to speak?
Um, yeah, Ben has his hand raised. I'm not sure if it was from before. I'm just going to ask him to unmute.
Great.
Hi, it's actually Catherine. I'm Ben's fiance, one of the people who's buying 105 New County Road. I just wanted to add my two cents. There seemed to be some concern regarding the fact that the 2011 comprehensive plan had zoned these for low density residential with the hopes that they would be developed. And I ask that instead of seeing this as moving away from the goal of residential development as moving towards the goal mentioned previously for rural zoning to preserve agricultural land in the city of Saco.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Isabel, is there anyone else you think that would like to speak?
Um, there is no one else with their hands raised at this time. Oh, I should have added, sorry, um, Inga Brown raised her hand. And I've just allowed you to talk. You'll just have to unmute. Sure, I just thought I'd jump in. Inga Brown, 161 Simpson Road. I think that the, um, compelling conversation here with the properties with such a long history of active farming, um, I think it's a, a really, um, very understandable request. I think this land, um, is, uh, very valuable and it should be part of the conservation zone. Um, properties such as the Fenderson Farm offer, um, so much value to, um, the community of Saco. Uh, we rely on the Fendersons for our hay, for our goats. And these types of agricultural, um, properties and, and what they produce for Saco, it can't be underestimated. And I think that we need to support our farms, um, as best we can. And I think this is a pretty common sense and logical request on behalf of these three landowners. Thank you.
Thank you, Inga. Isabel, do you think there's anyone else waiting?
Um, there are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. Board members.
Adam Chair.
Yes, Don.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, this is Jeff. I will second.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, call members for vote. Matt?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And the vice chair will vote yes as well. So the public hearing is now closed for this item. Um, board members, as we turn back to you, I will, um, point you towards page 305 of our packet, which has, um, some draft motions, some conclusions in there. If you'd like more discussion on this item, you can certainly weigh in. Yes, Don?
Madam Chair, I only had one additional concern. If we're moving, you know, to rezone this area, um, I'm a little concerned that the proposed rezoning sort of isolates, uh, three rather small parcels right along New County Road. That of the, um, the trapezoidal shaped parcel, uh, by Patterson, uh, as identified as a part, as part of, obviously, the Patterson property. And then the other two parcels, Gomart and Cody, uh, being left out of the proposed, uh, rezoning. Uh, I know there may be concerns that, uh, rezoning to, uh, Conservation District may put those folks in a different position that they're in today, but we have to be conscious of, of, um, how we weigh down zoning districts, uh, in the city. Uh, isolating those three little parcels out of a rezoning scheme, uh, would probably, in my mind, not be appropriate. Uh, and so they probably should be included, but I, I would be concerned obviously as to what effect that would have on those folks owning those properties. The other thing too is, um, zoning is not typically done by drawing a line down the middle of a road. And so if, in further consideration of this, some consideration should be given to whether or not properties on the other side of New County Road should similarly be pulled back from the comprehensive plan designation of low density residential to what's identified in the comp plan as RC, Rural Conservation. And so, you know, with that, um, I probably don't have, uh, any specific problems with this general recommendation that would, or this recommendation that we're dealing with tonight on these particular parcels. But I would certainly like to see the long range planning committee follow up on whether or not, uh, the low density residential, what will become West Residential, uh, should be pulled back on both sides of New County Road, um, in that regard. And so I g- I guess those are my concerns. I, I really don't have any particular problem, you know, with this proposed rezoning request, other than once again, isolating those three little parcels and not taking into consideration the, the southerly portion of New County Road. But anyway, uh, that can be dealt with by long range planning committee, uh, as, as time. But anyway, that can be dealt with by Long Range Planning Committee as time goes on.
Okay, thank you, Don. Jeff, Matt, any other comments at this time?
My only comment would be, so we're trying to discern on the request made by Mrs. Fenderson. We've included the Pattersons in this discussion. And, you know, both his grandfather and Ben had spoken to, you know, their purchase in progress for his need to, you know, continue with livestock. However, our draft motion on page 305 only references tax map 87 lot 17, which is the John and Linda Fenderson parcel. So are we, we would be correct or in error if we did not include the Patterson parcel of at minimum lot number nine, which I think is their larger farm parcel. And then, but the next question then comes into play is that they have a couple other, I think their family parcels, nine dash one, and then across the street, lot one and two. So, you know, is there a request? Should we have some clarity from the Patterson family as to which parcels or parcel they would like to have included in this rezoning? Now, maybe Mr. Hamlin could answer that.
Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, I was just thinking, let's go over to Bob quickly on this. Bob, you're muted still.
Excellent questions. The fact is that this, this goes back to during the ZOR process. And as I understand it, the request at that point was initiated by, in fact, Blue Wave Solar. So literally just in the past week, have I had to make the time to drill down and reach out to the Fendersons and then to the Pattersons. And I had the pleasure of speaking with Tate and his wife and Ben and his fiancee and came to understand that, in fact, yes, they would like to be included. In terms of drilling down further and picking off the lots that Jeff has just identified as far as nine dash one and two, and then beyond that, getting in touch with the Gomarts and the Codies, I have not. So I would, I would suggest, Madam Chairwoman, that we seek input from the Pattersons right now. And depending on direction from the board, I could see this as being staff's task before this might get to the city council to reach out to other potential affected landowners and seek their input on the potential for being included in a rezoning.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Isabel, do we still have Ben and Catherine with us?
Yes, I'll just have one.
So Ben, you probably just heard those comments by the city planner, if you'd like to just weigh in for us.
Yeah, so we, we had spoken with Bob or well emailed back and forth about the other parcel that goes with 107, or sorry, 105 New County Road, Tate and Carol's farm. Part of the same deed is the land directly across the street. Not sure if you're looking at a map from it, has the pond in the middle of it. So we actually asked if that could be included in this. That's surrounded on two sides by this new Conservation District. And it's part of the farm. We use it the same way as the rest of the farm. And then I'm actually sitting here with my parents as well, who own the funny trapezoidal property. And they are fine with it also being moved to Conservation. Am I correct on that?
Yes, that is correct.
That's, we, half the land is, that they have is part of my pasture for my cattle anyway, so it's no different than the rest of the farm, aside that their house is there on it. But in terms of the rest of the neighborhood, Norma Wright, who owns the, I believe it's 96 New County Road, and then the Codies and the Gomarts I can't speak to.
Oh, Madam, Madam Chairwoman, if I may, Ben, on the, on the pond parcel, which is identified as lot one, there's also a rectangular shaped piece with frontage on New County Road. It's lot two on the tax map. Did you mention that as well, or is that a different party that owns that?
Yeah, so that, it is a different party that owns that. It's Norma Wright who owns that. That piece used to be part of the farm. It was sold off many, many years ago to Norma's parents, who were a cousin at the time. But it is a different party.
Okay, so potentially staff could reach out to Ms. Wright and see what she might desire as far as zoning goes.
Okay, so Bob, at the, at the least, what I'm hearing is parcels nine and nine dash one. Am I correct? Would be two that would be encompassed in this motion potentially?
Nine, nine dash one, and both of those on the northerly side of New County Road. And then the Patterson's own to the south side as well, which is lot one, the parcel with the pond in the middle of it. And they're interested in that being rezoned to rural residential as well.
Okay. And then beyond the parcels that we've had the landowners speak on, then you would be reaching out to other landowners that would be potentially affected or benefit.
Yeah, at a minimum, certainly the Gomarts and the Codies, which, and you can see those parcels there. Perhaps years ago, they were part of the larger Fenderson property. And then across the street, I mean, while we're at it, I don't know why we wouldn't speak to the Pickards, Pickard Enterprises, as board members are aware, an existing gravel pit, mineral extraction operation. I don't know how far the board may want staff to investigate this, but I suppose that would involve taking a look at what are the pros and cons for, for gravel pit to be in the rural residential zone as opposed to the west residential zone. So probably worth communicating with Mr. Pickard and seeing what his opinion may be.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Yep.
Yeah, I just, I'm coming back to what I said before and following up on what Bob said before too. Bob, you know, help me if you can here. I seem to recall back in the 2011 COP plan process that we went through, and I know you and I were both there. There was, there was significant discussion about Deep Brook being a demarcation, if you will, between zoning districts. And I don't know frankly how it ever developed that the low density residential district got extended beyond Deep Brook. There was really a lot of significant discussion about whether or not that was really practical to do that.
Right.
And so as I'm looking at the proposal that's before us, it seems logical that the requested rezoning could certainly take into account. And if I don't have my map bearings incorrect, the southerly portion of the Patterson property identified as lot one with the pond, and also the Pickard Enterprises, two properties, along with a bunch of properties that look like they've been split off from the Pickard Enterprises properties on New County, right directly abutting New County Road, all the way up to Deep Brook Golf Course. It seems like, you know, in my mind, what the Long Range Planning Committee should do, and this is just an aside, is they need to come back and explore whether or not it really is practical to push low density residential development out beyond Deep Brook, you know, both sides of New County Road. I know that was talked about back then, and it's probably an issue that needs, you know, revisiting. In the meantime, from what I remember about this, Bob, and I don't know if you recall the same thing, I was not particularly supportive of pushing low density residential out beyond Deep Brook. I really wasn't because of all that encompassed, all that entailed, you know, with how that would be done out there. And so as this moves forward, if the Fendersons would be willing and if, you know, staff could touch base with the Gomarts, the Codies and Pickard Enterprises and anyone else who abuts in Fenderson Road out there, I'm sorry, New County Road out there, as to whether or not, you know, that zoning, you know, would be particularly troublesome for them. I think would be, you know, an appropriate approach. And certainly would go along with, you know, with what the Pattersons and the Fendersons are proposing, but simply taking a more comprehensive look, if you will, at the area and approaching the rezoning request from that standpoint. I know that may delay the process a little bit. And I'm interested in hearing if anybody has any thoughts about how we could expedite that. But that would be my thoughts, that it would be probably more appropriate to approach this rezoning in that regard, in that, in that way.
Okay, thank you, Don. Jeff, I see your hand up, but Bob, do you want to respond to anything that Don just said first, or?
I think Don's instincts are right on target. So I, loud and clear, and we will proceed cautiously and make sure all parties have an opportunity to weigh in with their preferences.
Okay, Jeff?
Madam Chair, in an effort to kind of keep things moving along, I think I'm ready to make a motion. I was wondering if Mr. Hamlin could give me a little bit of guidance. I'm having a little bit of difficulty here in identifying. So the parcel, the westerly parcel, there's a larger parcel of Patterson, which appears to be lot number nine. And there's the trapezoidal parcel that is subdivided as lot nine dash one.
Yep.
As we had easterly, we have Gomart as 17 dash one. But then we have Cody, which is showing up as nine again. Is it a different map number? Or is, I'm just, appears there are two lot number nines, Patterson and Cody. I'm confused.
It sure does. I, I have no answer for that. No, these are the same, same map. It's all, it is all map map 87. And I, first I noticed that, Jeff. There's clearly something wrong there, and I'm going to have to talk to the assess, to the assessing department to figure out what's the deal there.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I would move that the board forward a positive recommendation to the city council for zoning map amendment requested by John and Linda Fenderson and the Pattersons so as to rezone their parcels identified as tax map 87, lots one, nine, nine dash one, and 17 from R1D, soon to be West Residential, to C1, soon to be Rural Conservation, with the city staff to reach out to other property owners such as lots 17 dash one and nine, for the time being labeled as Cody, question mark, it's a discrepancy, to inquire if the owners would be agreeable to create a more unified, a uniformed zoning boundary, possibly using Deep Brook as a defining edge.
Thank you for that motion, Jeff. I think Bob was writing it down furiously. Is there a second?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Don. Discussion of the motion. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I guess for Mr. Gerard, you know, I think I'm trying to get the, you know, the motion through, obviously, for the applicants. And I think it can be open ended enough that staff, if they chose, could reach out to the southerly side of New County Road, as you had indicated, Pickard Enterprises and stuff. I mean, I think the sense and the direction we're giving is to try to create a more unified or defined zone. Does that wording sound agreeable? I mean, obviously you seconded, but would there be any modification you'd rather see?
No, I was going to recommend, Jeff, you know, that, that, an amendment to your motion. But I think where we're going, I think where you're going is okay. I would be perfectly, I think what the planning board is doing tonight is through your motion, we're getting on board with the Patterson-Fenderson proposal to rezone their properties. We're on board with that. I think as this moves forward to council, if staff was to determine that there are other properties, for instance, more specifically the Pickard properties and even Deep Brook Golf Course up to Deep Brook, getting on board with this rezoning proposal, that wouldn't change, you know, my approach of this this evening. I think that that's perfectly fine. And I think as, you know, to your point, it would work to further develop the more, a more uniform zoning pattern in that area, if you will, by not having the road in and of itself divide, you know, two different zones. And so I can support this motion that you, that you proposed this evening. And if staff makes further changes to it as it goes to council, I'm not sure that really needs to come back to the planning board because what in fact we're, we're doing now is your motion deals with Patterson-Fenderson properties. Okay, and if other properties piggyback on that as it goes to council, that doesn't, I don't know that that changes or that requires any further action from us or not. I don't believe it would, but maybe it does, and we'll see. I think we'll let that determine, let that work itself out. But I'll support your motion.
Yes, my intent with the motion was, is if other property owners, like you said, wanted to jump on, we've made our intent clear, we would like to try to get as unified or uniform a shape for the zoning district as possible. So the more that would join on would be in our best, our best interest or our best view for that area.
And if I may, Madam Chair, yes, I think, you know, now that you speak about that again, I think this discussion of the motion will, will act as the record as to, you know, the planning board is, is making this recommendation perfectly amenable and acceptable to the fact that other properties may be lumped into it as it goes to council. And I can support that.
The only suggestion I would possibly make, this is Jody, would be to list the potential properties that we will reach out to. That way it doesn't leave, you know specifically, you've listed the Pickards, the Codies. I would list that in that, so that way you don't, you're not getting, it leaves it completely defined as to who would be allowed into the change. Instead of leaving it generally open to any other abutters or to certain properties within. Bob, would you agree with that?
Absolutely. Yes, we'll be as clear as possible.
Okay.
Yep.
So that way the, the properties are already identified. When we get confirmation whether they want to be included, it is already identified and for council, so there's no questions for staff when writing up our commentary. Who would be allowed? If they choose so.
Phil, you're asking, like, you think it'd be best that I amend my motion to include those lots rather than just relying on staff to assume the remaining parcels? And that's what I did with, you know, the Cody and Gomart parcels. I guess my question before I were to make that amendment would be to Mr. Hamlin, it looks like the rural, the RR zone is behind the southerly part of Patterson to the south of New County Road. Does that continue on? Looks like there's a CMP corridor easement heading easterly. It looks like that whole area on the southern part of the map on RP, our packet 308, page 308 of the packet is rural residential, correct?
Yeah. Let me grab, we'll grab the right man here. I'm sorry, we're not able to throw this up on the screen. The, the existing, or what will be the west residential, that is, goes on that same angle right to the turnpike corridor. It ends there. To the, yeah, so that, that Yeah, so that that helps if we could if we could back out one stop. And I know we can't because that's the extent of the map right there. Uh but to to the south of what will be the West Residential Zone. We see some West Residential, but then uh immediately to the west of Deep Brook, uh that becomes um low-density residential. Uh so that takes in Deep Brook, it takes in uh. I'm gonna have to take that back. I think this, I think I've got an old map here. And I don't believe that Berry Road was included in the low-density residential. I'm simply gonna have to make sure I have an updated zoning map that I don't trust this one all of a sudden. But um certainly true, we're in an an area where there's a convergence of West Residential, Rural Residential and Low Density Residential and uh certainly by the time this makes its way to the city council, uh we'll have a much better map exhibit to offer for the offer the council.
So I guess my my other thought, Madam Chair, is if we look to try to be more specific and include Pickard Enterprise parcels. Deep Brook Golf Parcels. Um and then there's a assortment of what subdivided parcels, um lot eight dash one, seven dash five, seven, seven dash three, seven dash four and seven dash two. Would any of those become non-conforming if we change to, you know, what will soon be the Rural Conservation District from what they currently are and probably an LDR or?
Yeah, that that'll be a primary consideration. I I agree. Uh if the board wants to go to the point of listing these one by one, feel free. I don't need it. I've got a clear direction on where the board wants to go and uh in that we're talking about a fairly significant rezoning here. I can guarantee every smaller parcel that is shown on the 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 plan that you're the map that you're looking at. Uh will be contacted. Last thing I want uh is for, let's say, the night of a public hearing with the city council for two or three smaller property owners to pop up and say, first I've heard of it. Now, um staff would just as soon cut that off at the paths. Uh so uh just about literally over half of the parcels, certainly all the parcels that are shown within the existing uh West Residential Zone or the West Residential Zone to be. Uh would be communicated with, I would say, with the exception of um bless goodness. What is the Labonte subdivision over on the easterly boundary? Pleasant Pleasant Acres Estates. It's not coming to me, but the the fairly new subdivision that is under development right now that butts the uh turnpike on the easterly edge of the map we're looking at. Uh those folks would be left in the West Residential Zone, currently the R one D zone. That subdivision is very much based on the R one D zone with fifteen thousand square foot minimum lot sizes. Uh we we'd better just leave them alone.
Okay, thank you, Bob. On I see your hand up.
Yeah, i- in that regard, if I could suggest. And and I don't know that the Fennessons would necessarily object to this. It would be my inclination that the zoning change that's being requested would be would involve all the properties west of Deep Brook. And that Deep Brook be the demarcation between the two zones. Uh that would go to uh not involving, as you indicated, Bob. Uh the Labotti subdivision that's just west of the turnpike, abutting the turnpike and east of Deep Brook. But it would also um remove a bit of the Fennesson property east of Deep Brook. After rezoning from West Residential to um Rural Conservation. And so in that regard, I I would suggest it probably um that would be, in my mind, the logical demarcation between the two zones if we're going to move in that direction. And and it's easy to visualize it on that map on page three oh eight that we have if you just follow the Brook line. You know, uh north to south. Uh that would that would put uh the Deep Brook property uh in the Rural Conservation Zone, but everything east of Deep Brook where the Labotti uh development is now in to West Residential. And it would keep uh to the north side of New County Road, the Truman Property and a piece of the Fennesson Property to the east of Westbrook in West Residential. And the rest of it would become Rural Conservation, if that makes sense. Once again, very simply, I'm suggesting that Deep Brook becomes the north to south boundary, if you will, between West Residential and Rural Conservation.
Uh uh Madam Chairwoman, uh and I understood that makes perfect sense. I I will I will bet that was part of the discussion uh some eight or nine or ten years ago, Don, as you know.
Sure was.
Um I what I'm gonna want to find out from the Fennessons is how do they feel about that being the boundary, but also the the solar provider that they're talking about. Uh is Blue Wave Solar um intending any use whatsoever east of Deep Brook? And it could very well be they are not.
Right.
Uh and and then down below, down south of uh New County Road. How does the how does the golf course feel about this too? You know, clearly the uh the Brook would divide the golf course in two zoning lines and uh we'll we'll simply have to give some consideration to that. It might make perfect sense to go with the Burke as the boundary. But there's a few other things to consider, I think, that just jump off off the map at me.
Because if I may, Bob, I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, if I may add additional comment. Yeah, uh what I remember, i- i- if I'm not mistaken, on the the Labotti subdivision. Wasn't he required to extend uh water or sewer over the turnpike to his subdivision? And the discussion back in the two thousand eleven Comprehensive Plan is how practical is it to discuss or to extend west of the turnpike, all of those, all of that infrastructure?
Absolutely, yeah. Uh sewer for sure, and it only makes sense that water came across at the same time, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think probably he only did what was required to support his subdivision, not necessarily to support further low-density residential development further west of New County Road.
Uh well, I I I have to take exception to that to some extent.
Okay.
Howard Carter, Joe LeVarier, both of whom board members are familiar with. Uh we're absolutely giving um consideration to what would be possible further further west on New County Road. Uh so whereas perhaps uh uh Mr. Labonte could have gotten away with, just to pick a number out of thin air, a ten-inch sewer line uh to come across the turnpike. Uh the city may well have encouraged instead a twelve-inch line. Just recognizing a a little planning now uh could could pay benefits as development crept westerly. So some consideration was given to that. Uh elevations were taken into account. Uh you know, how far would a gravity uh feed work uh as we went west, etc. That that sort of thing. So some consideration was given um to development beyond Mr. Labonte's subdivision.
So the question arises, you know, was that all for naught if we're moving to, you know, rezone back to Rural Conservation rather than presidential?
Possibly, and of course, anybody who who travels Route Five out there uh knows darn well that uh you go down into a dip for the Brook and you come back down uh out of that dip. So uh gra- gravity is uh is a concern uh with a sewer line out there. So um I I I wouldn't characterize what happened with the uh crossing of the turnpike as as laying the groundwork for twelve hundred new residential lots by any means. You know, what would make sense for something further west of uh Mr. Labonte's subdivision? Was that taken into account? Yes. But was the groundwork laid for, you know, downtown Saco West uh not by a long shot?
Okay, so rewinding to ten fifteen minutes ago, Jeff made a motion seconded by Don. Board members, where do we stand? We're still within discussion of that motion right now. Jody asked for some clarification on parcels.
Madam Chair, Matt here.
Yes, Matt.
Uh is it possible for Isabel to put the uh proposed zoning map back up on the screen? Don, you started to speak about the question I had about the Brook being the demarc and I wish I could draw on the screen here, but you know, i- it it's starting to affect. It it's starting to affect other properties up on the north side of New County Road, you know. It's and like you said, you know, having a discussion with Fennessons about this, but you know, how how it bisects their law and then understanding how it bisects the Deep Brook property. Now Deep Brook is, you know, their property is in three zones. Um I just want to make sure that that's that's what we're directing or that's what we're discussing about directing staff um to make as a modification or um part of the recommendation here. Does that make sense?
Yes, um.
Madam, Madam Chair, this is Jeff.
Yes, Jeff.
I guess, I know we all want to desire to get to the, you know, the best, most uniform outcome like we were in the ZOR Committee. And um I guess I kind of want to pull back a little bit. I I agree. I like things very, very straightforward and cut and dry, but like Matt and Don bring up great points that, you know, we're we're now subdivided or sanctifying the existing lot into three different zones if we try to shoot for the Deep Brook boundary. And I guess that was not my intent uh at all in the way I'm reading the last part of my motion. We're we're talking about our our vision is just for staff to inquire if the owners would be agreeable to create a more unified boundary. Possibly be using Deep Brook. We could take that out because if the Fennesson said, no, we want our entire parcel to be um rezoned to the Rural Conservation. Then we just have them move the line there. I think the the biggest point for me was those three houses on the north side of New County Road to try to get them, if they were willing, let them jump in. And then kind of hold it there. If if the other parcels that we're talking about south of New County Road want to consider this as well and staff reaches out to them, I think they should come back to us as an additional recommendation, in my opinion. We have, you know, some property owners that have approached us. I think we've come to a pretty clear, concise option and with some direction for staff. And let um the remaining parcels to the south come forward if they would like to, you know, make a different amendment. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Matt again. Um I I I tend to agree with Jeff here. We seem that the discussions kind of strayed quite a bit from you know, the application here on the table. Um and that's, while I don't necessarily disagree with where the discussion is going, I'm just concerned about how much how much is changing here, you know, or much the discussion is changing the application and that that makes me a little apprehensive. Um I just wanna, I just want to make sure we understand the direction that we're giving staff, that's all.
Okay, so Matt, in regards to what Jeff just said with the three parcels north of New County that he identified as you know, to be reached out to by Bob, are you in favor of that?
I I think that I think that motion is the most appropriate motion for me right now. I think I think that's an appropriate direction. Yeah.
So it sounds like you're in agreement with Jeff then that the motion, as it was stated previously and seconded, seems to encompass your desires for this item tonight.
I don't see personally a reason to change the motion at this point based on the discussion, just my opinion.
Thank you, Matt. I'm in agreement with that. And Don, any other thoughts on the motion as it stands as you seconded?
No, I just want to be clear, if I can, that that from what I understood from Jeff's motion and what I seconded is the zoning change would involve lots one and nine and nine dash one and seventeen. You know, with an effort by staff to reach out to see if seventeen dash one and what may or may not be appropriately identified as an additional lot nine by Cody uh would be uh willing to also be included in the rezoning. That was my understanding of your of your motion, Jeff. Is that correct?
Jeff?
I believe so. Madam Chair, if I may, could we just request that Isabel um screen share um that page three oh eight? And if you don't mind, I would reread my motion so that all of us as board members can kind of look at the lots together. And just have clarity before we we move on this motion.
Sure. Okay, so as hopefully we can zoom in a little bit more. We're probably gonna hit a max with the zooming, but again, we're on page three oh eight of our packets. So Jeff, do you want to reread your motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the board forward a positive recommendation to the city council for zoning map amendment requested by John and Linda Fenderson, Fenderson and the Pattersons. So as to rezone their parcels identified as tax map eighty-seven lots one, nine, nine dash one and seventeen. From R one D soon to be West Residential to C one, soon to be Rural Conservation. With city staff to reach out to other property owners such as lots seventeen dash one and nine, question mark, labeled as Cody. To inquire if these owners would be agreeable to create a more uniformed zoning boundary. Possibly using Deep Brook. And New County Road as a boundary.
Okay. Thank you for rereading that, Jeff. And Don, I'm assuming your second to that still stands?
My second stands, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. So we've discussed this. We've reread the motion. We've looked at the map. At this point, I will call on members for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well, so that motion will pass four zero. Okay, thank you everyone for your attention to that. Um looking at the clock right now, I'd like to propose that we take maybe just a two-minute recess, come right back so that we're we're right back at it before nine o'clock to take up our next item on the agenda, which is John Lane's Way. Um I do want to give notice to anyone here for sixty-six Old Orchard Road that at this point that would be pushed out beyond our nine o'clock deadline for taking up new business and the board may or may not decide at the point in time that we reach that item to take it up this evening. So just be aware of that. Um so if everyone's on board for like a two, three-minute max quick break and we'll come right back and take up John Lane's Way. Thank you. Looks like we have everyone back just before nine, which is great. So um the next item on our agenda. the next item on our agenda is a public hearing. It's in regards to John Lane's Way, which is map one oh one lot thirty-seven dash eight. This is for a subdivision amendment to add one additional lot. The applicant is John Lane. Property is zoned C one. And we will be determining the application completeness, holding a public hearing and reviewing the proposed amendment based on the subdivision regulations. This starts on page three fifteen of our packet, if you're following along in the digital PDF. So first, Bob, I'll turn to you. I know that this particular item is a little unique in the history it has with us at the board dating back to twenty eighteen. So if there's info you think newer members should have and then any introduction that you think would be helpful, that would be great.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Yes, well, board members, I I hope you've had a chance to review my memo and quite honestly, much of that memo was plagiarized from an effort by a previous planner going on two and a half years ago now. The interesting situation here is that the applicant, John Lane, started with a a good-sized piece of property, dozens of acres out off the Fenderson Road. And off the Fenderson Road, he proposed a a limited-length private road, perhaps no more than four to five hundred feet would be my guess. And commenced with creating lots. So at the time, back in September of twenty eighteen, two lots existed and a third was proposed. Given the 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 time period over which the creation of these lots took place, staff, and again, I'm I'm pulling this from the file from two and a half years ago. I I did not live through this myself. The city staff was convinced that this third lot had been created approximately fifteen years earlier. Consequently, the recognizing that third lot as a third lot on the private road did not trigger subdivision review. A title attorney that was involved with the situation begged to differ. She was of the opinion that Mr. Lane had, what's a good word? Manipulated comes to mind, but I don't mean that in a negative way, had had conveyed lots, had had brought lots back together, had essentially moved boundaries around so that when when next he sought to create a lot and in in this case, it was this third proposed lot on on the private road that is John Lane Way. Under subdivision law, she was convinced that would trigger the need for subdivision review. So as I understand it, and I'm looking not only at a former planner's written comments here, but also Tim Murphy, the city attorney weighed in at about that time to offer his own view of what was happening. Parties, to some extent, agreed to disagree. And the planning board agreed to go forward with the review of a what was at the time a third lot on a private road. The subdivision, so the the net effect was a subdivision on a private road, which ordinarily we would not see as the as the zoning ordinance, nor the subdivision regulations support that. So what was done was done. Mr. Lane is now back for a fourth lot and this would absolutely be the final lot on a private road, that being the the limit per the ordinance as to the number of lots allowed on a private road period. Doesn't matter how many years may lapse. So all this came to light for me just in the past couple of, excuse me, weeks as we delved into the archives, pulled out the file on the activity about two and a half years ago and pulled together materials for this evening's meeting. So local engineer and surveyor Paul Gadboy has produced what is a a plan calling for a fourth lot on John Lane Way. Given the precedent that was established two and a half years ago, staff sees no reason to advise otherwise than to to essentially follow that precedent that allowed the creation of a third lot on the private road and put this before the board this evening as an amendment to a subdivision. The creation of an additional lot in a subdivision merits both preliminary plan and final subdivision plan review. So this evening, the preliminary subdivision plan is before the board for action. Butters have been notified, of course, a public hearing is scheduled. And Madam Chairwoman, I think I'll leave it at that. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bob. So board members, obviously, we first need to look at application completeness. Does anyone have any questions for Bob regarding that particular aspect? And is anyone inclined to make a motion to that effect? Top of page three sixteen.
Madam Chair, Don here.
Yes, Don.
I'll move to find the application for preliminary subdivision review to be complete.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, Matt here.
Yes, Matt.
I will second.
Thank you. Discussion of the motion? Yes, Jeff?
Chair, this is Jeff. I'm just there's a lot of, a lot to digest in this. How do we, how do we move forward with a you know, a subdivision amendment? When it really can't be a subdivision because it's not a a public street. I'm just, I'm a little bit perplexed by that. We have a title attorney and an additional attorney both agreeing that it's not you know, a sellable lot. And then we have the city solicitor kind of and the city staff taking a different stance. I guess I'm I'm just a little bit at a loss at this point.
I understand that, Jeff. I similarly, you know, had to kind of work through this several times in my head. I think at this point, my understanding is that given the two title attorneys' opinions regarding this being a saleable lot at this point, that that's their their hurdle ultimately. And although this may not completely fit into what we're working with for an ordinance, and although staff may differ in opinion, I think the ultimate finding was that in order for this transaction to move forward, they need to check this box. Right now, I think we do need to just look at application completeness so that we can move forward in reviewing this. So right now, Don has made a motion regarding completeness of the application. Matt has seconded that. And I think that's our first task tonight before we move forward, really digging into this. Any other discussion of the motion regarding application completeness? Okay, hearing none. I'll call for votes. Matt?
Yeah.
Don?
Yes.
Jeff?
No.
And vice chair will vote yes. So the motion for finding the application complete passes three to one. Okay. Moving on to board discussion. Other board members, Don, Matt, any additional comments picking up where Jeff just left off with his comments? Don?
Yeah, I I guess, I I, you know, I think we recall some of this detail, Bob. Going back, having previously reviewed this. There was some significant discussion, I remember, about between the attorneys with a lot of different opinions. For us this evening, as as Jeff alluded to, is it my understanding that there is no longer an issue as to whether or not this subdivision, as it exists today, is legally existing on a private road? Am I correct in assuming that that issue has been dispensed with? And what we're concentrating on this evening is not whether or not a fourth lot should be added on a private road subdivision, but rather whether a fourth lot is appropriately added to this subdivision at all. Is that, is that my understanding? Am I correct in that assumption?
I I I would, I'd give you a qualified yes. And I I just fall back on the notion that I I believe the precedent was established two and a half years ago with with the awareness and blessing and to some extent, the 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 reasoning through the lies by the city attorney. So I have not been back in touch with Tim about the current situation. So I can't say that he has recently blessed what is going on with this fourth lot, but it it did seem that the parallel is there that if the third lot, which was really the well, again, the the establishment of precedent that a a subdivision could be reviewed in conjunction with a private road. Was he on board with that? The record says yes. And that that's right. That's what I can say with complete confidence. I have not been back in touch with Tim about the current proposed lot. I can be before the board sees this again, but at this point, he is not aware of the current proposal.
Okay.
Bob, I have a question regarding Joe LaBarriere's memo from a little over a month ago, but
What, Madam Chairwoman, what page is that on?
I'm scrolling right now. The one I was reading is three thirty-six.
Okay, thank you.
I was just curious about the third item he mentions there. Has there ever been a private road maintenance agreement produced for the private road?
I, Madam Chairwoman, I am just flat out not sure. I, we do, hopefully, Mr. Gadboy is with us this evening, and if anybody should be familiar with the situation, it should be him.
Yep, Paul is here as well as John Lane's daughter, Vicky, who is acting on his behalf.
Okay, great. So Isabel, why don't you promote them? And in the meantime, Jeff, Don, we've heard from you. Matt, do you have anything else to add before Jeff? I just saw your hand go up again. No? Okay, Jeff, one more time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I would like to know. Obviously, I wasn't on the planning board back when this came before you guys in two thousand eighteen. But on page three sixteen of our packet, kind of the last paragraph, it says, this lot does not meet the minimum lot size requirements for the C one district since Mr. Lane conveyed two strips of land to the city in two thousand sixteen for an extension of Fenderson Road. And the city entered into a consent agreement with Mr. Lane in December of two thousand seventeen regarding the lot size and therefore the lot the applicant is interested in purchasing is a legal non-conforming lot. And I thought Fenderson Road was a private road. And if I recall, that there was discussion when we were contemplating private load road standards for the zoning ordinance, that this one was brought up as a discussion point because of the complications that have existed out there. And I think it's probably playing on what Mr. Girard was talking about, if there was a like a homeowners association or road maintenance agreement. You know, it seems to me the city went up there and had to do a bunch of work to kind of keep the peace of the neighborhood, if you will. And it's all kind of playing on this whole condition of this private road subdivision now non-conforming lot, but the city's made an agreement. It seems like there's a lot of stuff going on here to kind of sidestep the the true subdivision process, is my thought. And maybe Mr. Gadboy can can relate to some of that history.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Board members, any other concerns right now to express before we hear from either Bob again or also from the applicant?
Madam Chairwoman, I I would just clarify that I understand Fenderson Road for longer, it has been a private road for longer than it's been a city street. But, gosh, I'm gonna say roughly fifteen years ago, the Fenderson Road neighborhood banded together, came up with an agreement that was acceptable to the city council at the time. At this point, the great majority of Fenderson Road is a duly accepted city street. In fact, I think you'll see on Mr. Gadboy's plan, and I'm looking at page three thirty-four. There is a, it shows in part the private road that is John Lane Way, but also in part Fenderson Road. And there's a note on that plan saying, and and an arrow points to a point on Fenderson end city fifty foot wide right of way. I have not been involved with Fenderson Road for a few years now, so I can't say I'm perfectly up to date on it. But for some time, there was discussion with Mr. Lane as an abutting property owner, but also a property owner who's on the other side of the right of way. And looking at this plan, I I see another note here, existing thirty-three foot wide right of way. So this is dragging my memory a little bit. In fact, if if owners out there hoped to have Fenderson Road extended beyond a cer- beyond a certain point, they were going to have to convey strips of their own property in order to widen that right of way to fifty feet in width. As I recall, exactly that happened. Fenderson Road was able to be extended. At least one additional lot was created thanks to that on the, what I'll call the northerly side of Fenderson Road, the other side away from John Lane Way. But also the extension of Fenderson Road as a city street allowed Mr. Lane to come off Fenderson Road with his private road. So agree, there's been something, a lot going on with this end of Fenderson Road for for years now. And in in part, the creation of the private road, the conveyance of strips of land from Mr. Lane and I believe it was Mr. Galloway on the other side of the street, made that possible. I'm sorry, we don't have the city engineer with us this evening. I'm sure his memory would be much clearer on some of the goings on out here, but suffice to say, Joe's well aware of this proposal this evening. And I I think, was it earlier, Madam Chairwoman, you were curious about a point that Joe had raised in his memo?
Yes, yeah, he he definitely wrote a, I think it was a January twenty-ninth memo recently regarding this, so. We have that from him. That was on page three thirty-six.
And, oh, yes, um, basically, as soon as a private road has two lots on it, it must have, per the ordinance, a a maintenance plan that is, gets recorded. a maintenance plan, uh, that is, gets recorded with the, uh, registry of deeds and is also submitted to the city. Uh, with that third lot, I, I can only say I'm hopeful all parties were well aware of that requirement and that, uh, at least going back to, again, fall of two thousand eighteen, uh, that a maintenance agreement, uh, was agreed to by all three parties and has been, uh, on file with the city since then. Uh, that's, that's the way it should have worked. As I sit here right now, I can't confirm whether it did or not.
Okay, so obviously, a question we have for the applicant. Um, board members, any other discussion before we introduce the applicant and their representative? Okay, hearing none. Um, Isabel, I see you've promoted both Vicky and Paul regarding this application. So, I'm not sure which one of you would like to speak first, but you've obviously heard some questions from board members. Hi, Vicky. Yes, if you'd like to introduce yourself, that would be great, and you'll have to unmute. Yep?
Okay, um, I'm Vicky Duggan. I'm John Lane's daughter, and, um, he lives at Twenty-Four Park Road in Saco, and Fenderson Road is like on the opposite side of his land. And, um, I'm not sure, I've never heard of anybody manipulating lots or anything like that. Um, the history I grew up and knew is my dad bought parcels of land from Bill Allen. And he would buy, every now and then, Bill Allen, when he got some money, Bill Allen would sell him another chunk of land. So eventually, he ended up with like thirty-three acres, give or take. I'm not sure the total, what the total was. And, um, I'm sorry, my phone's like... So, um, and I just want to say, on this, the lot, um, that you keep saying there's four lots, one of those Bill Allen sold. And my dad actually owned that land, and Bill Allen sold it out from under him. And it was mentioned at the last subdivision, um, hearing. I don't know who the gentleman was that said it, but, um, that was my dad's property, well, it was, but my dad didn't sell that, Bill Allen did. And I believe his entrance is to Fenderson Road, not on John Lane's Way, his driveway. To be wrong, but I'm pretty sure that, that's that. The other thing is, the, um, the first lot he sold was to, um, Anton Tapchia and Natalia Czech- Czecholombia Nova. Um, they're actually the people that want to buy this lot. So, it's not even bringing in new people. It's, they just want to extend their property. They own the lot across the street. And then the other people bought, uh, the land and put the yurt on it. But, you know, I, I know some people that, you know, I have friends that live on Fenderson, and I've never heard anybody complain about the subdivision at the end of the road. And I will say, um, because we used to camp there, um, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago, the end of Fenderson Road was a party zone. And people dumped tires, they dumped trash, they were out there in their cars at night. It was a party zone. And it's no longer a party zone because you have this subdivision, or whatever you want to call it, that, um, the lots that are there. And when they were doing this original subdivision, he was following the specs of the planning, uh, code enforcement and all that, because they told him how to put this road in. Because they had to, he put, you know, sixty-plus thousand dollars into this road, because that's what the city of Saco required to have it be in the subdivision. He was then told that he needed to give up some land for, um, I think what Bob had said. Um, which he was like, fine, I think he gave up land on John Lane's Way, too, because of the right-of-way. Paul would know more on that. But, yeah, it, it's not like, you know, he actually intended to give his kids this land, but I, I'm sorry, I moved out to Brownfield. I didn't, I love Saco, but, um, I wanted to be out in the country. And when his kids didn't, we weren't gonna buy it, um, he, and he would sell it. And, um, he'd actually be here right now, but he fell and, um, fractured his back, and he actually just got home, so, um, that's why I'm here instead of him. But, it's, um, i- it's not like it's a huge development. Like I said, the gentleman that lives across the street and his, um, wife are the people that want to buy that land. And where they went ahead with the subdivision, like, I don't know the rules or, or, or what transpired in order for him to get the original subdivision, but they passed the original subdivision, so I don't understand. And there's no more lots to be made. So I don't understand why, um, all of a sudden now, it's a big deal. And the people that live in here know Anton and his wife. They pile the roads. It's not, it, it's not like it's a huge development. And I haven't, you know, I haven't heard anything negative on it, just so, you know, I know what you guys are hearing, but, um... Yeah, so, um, like I said, this is his last lot, and he, um, said people across the street would like to touch it. And, um, I'm just trying to help them with that, so we can refinance and, um, his mortgage and get, you know, his, so he can get his taxes paid in with his mortgage and, and try to set him up. He's seventy-nine years old, and, um, I don't think he's gonna be developing any more big pieces of land. So, but I appreciate you for listening.
All right, thank you, Vicky. Um, Paul, would you like to add?
Sure. Um, a couple of things. There's only one lot being accessed through this private way. Um, the other two have access off Fenderson Road. Fenderson Road was improved up to John Lane's Way, so that is now a city road up to where John Lane, at, again, the, the new pavement. So that was inspected and proven built to publicway standards. The only lot come, using the private way is the Anton slash Natalia Lot. The other two lots have the driveway access off of Fenderson Road. So there's only one lot u- utilizing that private way. So a maintenance agreement, um, isn't required as of yet, because there's only one lot owned on that private way. The approved plan does require maintenance agreement. It was approved back in two thousand sixteen, when there's two, more than, one, more than one lot, and maintenance agreement has to be recorded to York County Register of Deeds. So, if this gets approved, certainly, that will be one of the requirements that a maintenance agreement will have to be recorded there at the York County Register of Deeds. Even though it'll be the same owner, there'll still be two separate lots, so that should be taken care of now. Unless there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer any questions, uh, other than that.
Um, no, thank you, Paul. That, and the conversation about the yurt is now really jogging my memory to those meetings, because that was a very specific property in use that we were looking at.
That was a, that was a lot of record when we did the original subdivision, or the private way plan to create that one lot to south of the right-of-way. There was the DeRosa Lot that was existing. Um, there was a lot that John Lane owned that's been on the city pay tax, tax base for many, many years. Uh, that was never considered a non-buildable lot, even though it didn't have front-end and approved private way at that time. Um, so, uh, Carl McComick did buy that lot. Some, a t- a title attorney researched it back. Either it was leased at one time, or there was something that, you know, people did agree to disagree, so the simplest thing was to, let's just bring it back to subdivision, get that lot approved. So that's what happened on the McComick lot, because again, two different lawyers, either they agreed or didn't agree, and so we did that. Um, so now we're coming back for the second lot on that private way, um, to be bought by the abutter.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Board members, additional discussion and questions for the applicant and their representative? We do need to, uh, hold a formal public hearing on this as well.
Madam Chair, this is Don.
Yes, Don.
I will, uh, move to open a public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, this is Jeff. I will second.
Thank you. Uh, without discussion, I'll call for a vote on the public hearing. Matt?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And vice chair vote yes, so we will now open a public hearing. Isabel? Um, I'll turn to you to see if there's any members of the public waiting with or without their hands raised.
Sure. Um, I'll just remind those who are, um, who have stuck around, that if you are looking to speak on this item, just use the digital raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen to be recognized. Um, just one more call for hands to be raised. Okay, there's no one with their hand raised.
Madam Chair, this is Don.
Yes, Don.
I will move to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Chair, this is Jeff. I will second.
Thanks, Jeff. Without discussion, I'll call for a vote. Don?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, vice chair votes yes, so the public hearing is now closed. And back to board members. Questions right now? For the applicant, for Bob? I think we do have a draft motion and just a final discussion from the bottom page three sixteen into the top of page three seventeen, where there are draft findings of fact and conditions of approval. And Bob, I guess I have a question. So if a, obviously, if and when a private road maintenance agreement is required, is that already within these conditions of approval?
That, uh, not in these conditions, in the, um, private road approval from two thousand fifteen, yes.
So it's already in there, it just has not been triggered yet, because there's currently only one landowner using that private way?
Yeah, and frankly, I'm surprised to hear that, um, generally, the city looks to minimize curb cuts coming out onto a city street. Uh, so I certainly believe, uh, what Paul just represented, but, um, I'm surprised that, uh, each of the three existing lots on the private wo- road were not required uh, to have, to have their access, uh, from the private road, period. So, surprised to hear, but, um, okay, I'll, I'll accept that for the time being. Um, but, yeah, Paul was exactly right. Until there's a second lot, uh, dependent on the private road, then, uh, there need not be a, a maintenance agreement. So, so with this, uh, second lot evidently that will be dependent on John Lane Way for access, there will have to be a, a maintenance agreement.
Okay, so that takes care of my item. That sounds like it will resolve itself without any amendments to the conditions of approval. Board members, any other concerns, discussion? I'll just go around the table, I think, quickly. So, Don, have you had all your questions addressed at this point?
I think so. This has been, to me, uh, recalling, having dealt with this before, very, very complicated from the very beginning. However, I don't see anything in particular with this particular proposal to add another lot that makes it, um, any more, um, questionable in my mind as to what, um, is going on, if you will, or what is happening. Um, I, I don't let my comments in, infer that I think there's anything inappropriate going on. I'm, I'm not saying that at all. All I'm saying is that, uh, the addition to this particular lot doesn't, uh, doesn't infer to me, doesn't confer to me any additional problems that I can see, you know, with the subdivision.
All right, thank you, Don. Matt, anything else to add?
Um, no, I'm in general agreement with Don. I, I recall this as well, is very strange situation and scenario. And, um, almost as if this lot here, the proposal before us, kind of clo- closes out the loop on the whole thing. So, yeah, definitely, nothing crazy jumping out at me here, right now.
Thank you, Matt. Jeff, any further comments?
Um, Madam Chair, I guess, I'm still trying to make my head around if it's a... How do we determine if it's a, a, a legal lot? To be s- can, submitted as part of a subdivision amendment? We just seem to have very different thing, different legal opinions, and I'm just kind of trying to make a determination.
Well, in terms of the lot being legal, Bob, I don't know if you want to weigh in on that, but my understanding that this, this is just a necessary step for, then, all of the attorneys that have looked at this to feel that this is an appropriate move for this lot.
Uh, I, I, I wouldn't disagree with that, Madam Chairwoman, but, uh, al- also, between now, uh, if the board, um, sees fit to take action on this evening, the point's already been made that this must come back for a final planner review. We will, I will absolutely have an updated, um, uh, memo and or opinion from the city attorney as to the situation. Uh, I'll also make every effort to, uh, make sure that the city engineer is with us. So, I, I think between the two of them, they can, uh, present a more complete picture than I've been able to this evening. But in, in terms of moving forward, I, I have no qualms. Uh, I, I believe this is ready for consideration of, uh, uh, approval of the preliminary plan, and, uh, we will provide more information, hopefully, to improve the board's comfort level, uh, um, along with the final plan submission.
And at that final stage, when we see this again with more input, we would still be able to modify the conditions of approval?
The book's entirely open until the final a- action is taken on the final plan. That's right. Anything can change between now and then.
Okay, so, turning back to you, Jeff, is there anything else beyond what Bob has just suggested as next steps that you'd be looking for? You're muted right now. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not. Like I said, I'm just, it's not as cut and dry, um, where we can apply our standards as, as directly, um, as usual. So I'm just, I'm kind of at a loss at this point. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, board members. If anyone is inclined, um, there is a draft motion that can be modified in any way, the top of page three seventeen. This is again for prelim- preliminary review, and as Bob mentioned, this will be coming back for a final review. At which time, we'd have some more input. We could modify conditions of approval.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes, Bob.
Uh, looking at that draft motion, um, I would say that it is not drafted, uh, perfectly. I'm, I'm gonna suggest that anybody who cares to make a motion says, should specifically include, uh, reference to a preliminary plan approval, so that, uh, I move the board grant approval for the, um, preliminary plan, if you will, of the amended right-of-way and subdivision plan and, and so on. Uh, just clarify that this is preliminary, and there, there is final still to come.
Great.
Madam Chair, Don?
Yep.
Madam Chair, I'll move that the board grant preliminary plan approval for the amended right-of-way and subdivision plans submitted by applicant John Lane based on the findings of fact and conditions of approval dated March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you, Don. For a second?
Madam Chair, Matt here. I will second.
Thank you, Matt. Discussion of Don's motion, um, regarding approval of preliminary review for this item. Don?
Madam Chair, I made the motion totally with regard- Madam Chair, I made the motion totally with regard to Bob's initiative that he will approach attorney Tim Murphy again for the city to determine whether or not what we're doing is in compliance with what is appropriate action to take in this regard. And, yeah, with that, specifically, my concern is that the board is somehow not running afoul, if you will, of some particular legal aspect of this this process.
Thank you, Don. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. I'll call for a vote. Matt?
Yes.
Jeff?
Abstain.
Don?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so the motion will pass with a vote of three positives, one abstention. Okay, thank you, board members. Thank you, Paul and Vicki. Bob, is there anything else you need on this item tonight from us to wrap this up?
There is not. I I place my faith and trust in Paul Gadboy. He knows what to do next, and I'm sure he'll communicate with me if he has any questions, and and very simply, it's going to be preparation and submission of the final subdivision plan, and we will schedule accordingly. Beyond that, Madam Chairwoman, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, excuse me, Bob?
Yes.
I'm just going to wait to hear from you as far as what the attorney recommends before proceeding.
Yeah, I will be in touch with Tim Murphy tomorrow, and I frankly, I am hopeful that Tim has simply simply reiterates what he memoed the board on a cup, two and a half years ago, but yes, as soon as I've gotten feedback from the city attorney, Paul, I'll I'll pass that on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Paul and Vicki on that one. Board members, we have one item left on our agenda. It is now nine forty. I'll look for guidance from you on where you'd like to head with that.
Madam Chair, because it is past the nine o'clock hour, we don't typically take up new items. I will make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Don. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I will second that motion.
Thank you, Matt. Any discussion for the sake of it, Jeff? Yeah.
I was just, I don't know, I got, felt like I defended people when I cut people when I adjourned early last meeting, and I'm not, I'm not a huge fan of having, you know, four meetings in a row, so I was willing to to push through on this one if we could get one more at least started, but I can respect the other board members if they're tired, or if it does need to continue, it may not be fair to have three other members who aren't abreast of what we've been discussing, so I guess I'll I'll leave it up to you guys as how the vote goes to adjourn.
Bob?
I would just confirm for the board that God bless you all and have a wonderful Tuesday evening next week. We're not going to be spending it together. The the next planning board meeting is scheduled for March thirtieth. We know the first item on the agenda will be the proposed multifamily dwelling on Saco Island East. And after that, we'll kind of make it up as we go, but we will have probably four to five items on that agenda, but next next meeting will be March thirtieth, and then immediately a week thereafter on April sixth will be the meeting after that.
Don?
Yeah, I just had a question, Bob, as to whether or not we are still having a workshop on the thirtieth in spite of the the heavy weight of our agenda. Are we having a workshop, and what will be the subject of the workshop?
If we are. Haven't gotten that far ahead of myself, Don.
Okay.
If board members care to have a workshop, tell me what it's going to be about, and we'll make it happen.
I I don't have any suggestions right now, but if if our agenda is really heavy, you know, you're you're suggesting four or five items, as we indicated, as we really had tonight, then maybe without the urgency of ADUs or MPDs burning our toes, may I suggest that probably, interesting coming from me, huh? Interesting that that we should probably suspend workshop on the thirtieth and move right into, you know, all the items on our agenda, so we can, once and for all, maybe once in our lifetime, bang through an entire, an entire agenda without having to continue anything.
Don, would you be in support of a five-thirty start? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I would be, I would, yeah, Matt, I I would say five-thirty start, no workshop, and we just bang through as many as we can, because you know, we keep falling behind. We keep, you know, the bow wave keeps getting bigger and bigger, I think. And, you know, we need to try to resolve that if we can.
I agree. I share that opinion. I would be in support of a five-thirty start.
Yeah, unless we have, you know, once again, unless we have anything really burning and really appropriate two weeks from now to talk about with MPDs, you know, or with sprinklers and ADUs or whatever. I'll I'll leave it up to the other members to, you know, to share their thoughts.
I'm away on vacation that week, so I won't be with you guys.
Oh, then, yeah, you know, why don't we just, hopefully, you know, hopefully, we'll have a quorum, and we'll just, you know, I think we ought to just bang away at the items we have on our agenda, Bob. You're suggesting we're going to have four or five, right?
Without half trying, we 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 could have eight or nine if you thought you could.
I'm sure. I'm sure.
Nope, loud and clear, five-thirty start, no workshop, and we'll line them up, and you can knock them down.
Yeah, we'll try. We'll do our best.
Okay.
Okay, so with no objections to adjourning, with no other items to discuss, I think that will do it for the night, right?
Great. Thank you, everyone.
Yep.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Take care.
Have a good vacation.
Thank you. Bye.